Paging Vice Chair Eads.
Vice Chair Eads to the dais, please.
Always, always. Get my best tips from him. Great, we are, if everyone's, everyone's good to go? Ready to go? Thumbs up from everyone? Okay, perfect. Welcome, everybody. Tonight is, or this, this evening, it's Monday, August 25th, 2025. It is 5:00 PM and we have a workshop with the Planning Board Comprehensive Plan Committee, as well as the Town Council to review the recent passing of LD 1829. Before we kind of get in, and LD 1829 for the folks watching at home is the state's new housing density law, and we're really here to understand what that means for Cumberland, both from a compliance perspective, as well as how we're going to lead or leave, or kind of weave these larger changes into our comprehensive plan, which we are currently working very hardly at. We have Mary Costigan here from Bernstein Schur, who is going to jump into kind of the legalese and give a high-level overview of what this means for all of our bodies, so that we can be compliant and plan ahead and not be on the naughty list at the state level. So, Mary, over to you, and then just a heads up to everybody. So after Mary kind of does her overview and high-level presentation, we will move into Q and A, so folks can feel free to head right up to the podium, ask particular questions, don't be shy about them, and we'll just all moderate from up here, so that we're all going in order. But, does that all work for everyone? Thumbs up on the format? All right, thumbs up for Mr. Longley, Code Enforcement Officer of the Year. That means we're good to go. Mary, over to you. Thanks so much for being here.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Again, Mary Costigan. I am the brand-new town attorney, so I don't have a lot of history yet in Cumberland, so I don't have the context to be able to kind of tell you exactly what this means. This is the first time I'm looking at this map, but we can all kind of figure that out. But I'm just going to give you sort of the highlights of 1829. I will say that we still, you know, right now, it is to become, you know, implemented here July 1st of 2026, but we have one more session between now and then, so things could still change. Hopefully, some things get clarified, because there are, I think there's a couple of actual, like, mistakes in here. And so, you know, potentially, things will get clarified. I don't know if, you know, sort of the big policy decisions on density will change, but there's always, you know, some tweaking. So you don't want to get too far ahead of it, but you want to plan for it. And actually, you know, from, you know, the comprehensive plan aspect, you certainly want to know sort of the big picture and where you think the policies are headed, to keep that in mind. So, I'm gonna, I don't have a presentation, because it really would have just been a bunch of words, because it's just a statute. So, I'm going to start with the three and four units. So if you remember, LD 2003 created this really complex way of telling you whether you could have an additional two, an additional three, an additional four, and where you were, and, and this, there is an attempt to make it a little bit clearer. So now, once this is in effect, it's a much more simple test, which is this. Anywhere in town where residential use is allowed, anyone can have three dwelling units. In areas that are served by public water, or in growth areas, they can have four units. So that's kind of like the simplification of the three versus four units. Okay? And then building on that is the density piece. And this is all, the three and four units and the density are all in the same section of the, what will be in the new statute, so it's 4364A. So when it refers, but it's, it's hard, because you only see it as the bill right now, and we don't kind of see it in, in the law to sort of see what else is in there, but you can just assume that the things that when they're talking about the density, they're actually, they're talking about the three and four, and it all ties together. So, if a lot is in a designated growth area, and served by public water, the town cannot set a minimum lot size greater than 5,000 square feet. In addition to that, the density cannot exceed 1,250 square feet per unit for the first four dwelling units. Got that? So you have growth area and public water. You're allowed to have four units. You can't have a land area per dwelling unit requirement greater than 5,000 square feet, and for the first four units, it's actually 1,250 square feet.
1,250 is the land area?
Yep, land area per dwelling unit. So beyond that, if you have a multifamily with six units, the fifth and sixth could have 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. But that's it. You could have anywhere between 1,250 and 5,000, but nothing more than 5,000 per dwelling unit. If a lot is, and now here's the, the second one. So you have, the first category I gave you was growth area and public water. The second area is outside a designated growth area, but with public water. Okay? That is also, the minimum lot size cannot exceed 5,000 square feet. For the first two dwelling units, it's 2,500 square feet. Per dwelling unit, sorry, per dwelling unit. So, it's a 5,000 minimum lot size, and you can put two units on there, essentially. You can make it smaller, and allow three, four, or five, but you have to at least allow two units in that 5,000 square feet. Is there a question over there? Sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
Could you clarify that it's water and not sewer?
Uh, let me read. Uh, let's see. The, it's in an area served by public special district or other centrally managed water system, and, and a sewer system. Yeah, it's water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Yeah, I was just kind of shortcutting, but yeah, it's water and sewer.
There's, there's a huge difference there.
Okay. In Cumberland specifically?
Anyplace. If, there's a huge difference between water and water and sewer.
Yeah. Well, are there many places in Cumberland that are served by public water, but not by public sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
The idea that you could put a house on 1,200 square feet, and another one on 1,200 square feet, and find adequate sewage, get a license evaluator to come in and design a septic system on small areas-
Yeah.
-is a, is a lot more difficult than providing-
Yeah.
-a blanket if you just have water.
Yeah, well, you're getting to my next category, which is, uh, the third category, which is you are outside the growth area, and you do not have public water or public sewer. Okay? So, that's the third category. In that category, you cannot have a minimum lot size greater than 20,000 square feet. Because that, and that's the 20,000 square feet lines up with the subdivision statute. It actually refers to the subdivision division, and it's all related to the wastewater system. Yes.
So, how does this affect, we have-
Mr. Bingham, could you go into the microphone, please? Sorry, just for the folks at home.
You have one right there.
Oh, you've got one right in front of you, sir. Thank you.
So, how does this affect, we have two rural residential zones.
Mm-hmm.
We have RR2, which is two acre minimum, and we have RR1, or I may have them mixed up, which is four acre minimum.
Mm-hmm.
So if the minimum lot size in a non-sewered area is 20,000 square feet, does that mean that, that the two acre minimum and the four acre minimum go out the window?
Yes.
So in other words, right now, and Bob or somebody is the, how many, how many square feet are in an acre?
44,000.
Forty-four thou-
2,560.
Hang on, I'm gonna, I answered that too quickly, I'm gonna take it back. And this is a conversation I had with my colleague today, and we were going back and forth on this. So, because this is not well-written. So the first category that I mentioned is it's located in a growth area, and it's served by water and sewer. The second category is outside a growth area and served by water and sewer. The third category is actually, if a lot is located in a growth area without public water and sewer, then it's 20,000 square feet. I don't think they've addressed in 1829, if you're outside the growth area and not served by water and sewer.
So there is nothing-
So I, if you're, if it's, if your rural areas are outside growth areas, I don't think this, this restriction applies.
Well, I think it's, it would be a very, very good thing for somebody, because we're in the process of doing the plan right now, and, uh, it would probably affect the RR outside the growth area.
Mm-hmm.
We do have, uh, one acre minimums in the growth area for water and sewer, and two acre minimums in the four acre for water and sewer. So that, this does have an effect, so I, so we do need some clarification from somebody, because this totally affects our rural areas, and I thought that that was going to be addressed tonight.
What, you thought what was going to be addressed tonight?
The rural areas. As far as our two and-
Yeah.
-four acre minimums-
Yeah.
-are we gonna have to change those?
So according to this, if you have areas in town that are not in a designated growth area, and are not served with public sewer, then these restrictions do not apply.
But if, if the, in the, in the rural areas, if they are serviced by water and sewer, then-
Yeah.
Then the 20,000-
The 5,000 applies. Growth area is 5,000.
I'm talking about outside the growth area that's served with water and sewer. That's door number two, is that correct?
Inside the growth area?
Outside.
Outside the growth area, yeah, that's correct. That's 5,000 square feet.
So in our two, in our two acre minimums, in our four acre minimums, on water and sewer, AKA Tuttle Road, that basically the sky is the limit, as far as those, those two and four acres, they can now go to 20,000 square feet. Is that correct?
5,000.
Wow.
5,000 is outside a growth area but served. 20,000 feet is inside the growth area but not served.
Okay.
No, no.
So it's, it's the wild west, then, as far as our growth area, our rural areas that are serviced by water and sewer?
Yes.
Bob? Bob, and then Mr. Moriarty.
I, I think you just contradicted yourself.
Did I?
The way I understand it, if I have any land outside of my growth areas and outside of water and sewage, the minimum is 20,000 square feet, so that-
No.
-that means that I can build a house on 20,000 square feet, so that's equivalent to two houses per acre anywhere in town.
The third category, and I'm just, I'll just read it. The third category is a lot located in a designated growth area without public special district or other comparable sewer system. That is the 20,000. So if you are outside a growth area, a designated growth area, and you do not have access to public sewer, then there are no restrictions, and you can have your two acres, four acres.
Current zoning is effective.
That is correct.
But if it's water and sewer-
And you're outside a growth area, then it's 5,000.
5,000 square acres, 5,000.
Square feet, square feet.
So that's the wild west, then.
I know, it does, I'm not, I didn't write it. It doesn't make sense. But that's what it says. And may, yeah, again, these are, you know, I don't know if that was intentional, but that's how it's written.
Oh, sorry, could we, um, just because there are folks at home watching, first Mr. Moriarty, and then Mrs. Bingham, if you want to come up afterwards, and just speak into a mic, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Steve Moriarty from 12 Oak Street. I'm currently the Chair of the Comp Plan Committee. Just a favor to ask, Mary, we all have copies of the signed bill.
Yeah.
It might be helpful for us to follow-
Sure, yeah.
-if you were to identify which section you're speaking about.
Yes.
Because I'm jumping around, and I'm, it's hard to, it's hard to follow. I think you're talking about Section 9.
Yes.
Okay. What I see missing there is Option 4.
Right.
Which is a rural area with no water and no sewer. And I think what Bob is asking is, what is the rule in that situation?
Yeah. I, I, I think that means there's no density restrictions in that situation.
So local zoning prevail?
Yes. Yeah.
With the exception of water and sewer.
Right. Right, in, in the situation where you are outside a growth area and you do not have access to public sewer, the, this new bill does not place restrictions on that situation. They only have three categories, and that's not one of them.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that one? Yeah, this is so hard to adjust. Yeah, come on.
So, Ed Libby, 145 Greeley Road. My question is, I'm looking at this, I understand this map, I've seen it before, and it shows our growth areas, and it shows our rural areas. But what I don't know that it correlates is the two, the rural zonings, like when we're talking about two and four acres. Is that everywhere in pink?
No.
Necessarily? So that, it would be helpful if there was a, some sort of overlay, I guess, between not only the zoning, but where the water and sewer is, sort of all on one map, so you kind of see what's going on.
So I, I, I mean, I think the, for the comp plan folks, the takeaway certainly is to take a look at where your designated growth areas are, and where your public water and sewer are, and how that all overlays with these three categories. And keep these three categories in mind, and how you would want to kind of move things around in advance of this becoming implemented, or at the same time. in advance of this becoming implemented, or at the same time.
I have a question. So it says that the, and I know that there's an additional session that's coming up.
Right.
But if our deadline for all of our ordinances to be in compliance is July 1st, 2026, and we're in the process of doing our comprehensive plan, Bridgette or maybe Steve, what's our, do we have a drop-dead kind of month in mind for when it's gonna be finished?
Sure.
Yes, April 2026.
And will that give us enough runway to get all of our ordinances updated in time?
Under council request, we have until April 2026.
Okay.
To complete the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, honestly, I don't know, that's a good question.
I'm just wondering, and obviously if there's changes that are coming from the next session, you know, that's gonna be important as well, but I'm also trying to understand, this is, you know, certainly needs to go to the Comp Plan, but we don't want to find ourselves out of compliance, right? And so how are we, is there any kind of wiggle room in terms of implementation dates, deadlines? Especially since we have the Comp Plan in play. Mr. Moriarty, what are your thoughts, sir?
Tig, the April deadline is part of your charge to this committee. You can amend your charge at any time.
Right, but my question is kind of, we also, we need to do the work, and we want to do the work thoughtfully and do the work well. And so my question is kind of from updating our ordinances and from a process perspective, you don't want to put the chicken before the egg or the, you know. Is there flexibility with that July 1st deadline to have all of the ordinances compliant? If there is a comprehensive plan that's in the process of being kind of finalized and adopted? Sure, yeah, Christina might have an answer.
Christina Mitchell, the state rep. Yes, Greg Payne, the Housing Senior Housing Advisor for the governor, spoke to last week and he said, yes, any clarifications, any mistakes, whatever, we're hoping you like bring those forward in other towns. And yes, I mean, it is the law, it's not gonna go away, but adjustments and whatever, definitely bring them and we can do what, he called it a fix bill.
Okay, great, let's, we should jot all of those down.
And we're in touch with Greg as we're reviewing and letting him know what mistakes we find.
Okay. Are there additional, I just want to make sure that kind of we're going through the statute in a way that's strategic and that everyone's able to kind of answer their quest, get their questions answered. Are there any, would it make sense to go through kind of all of the really important pillars of this? You know, we've hit the growth areas, outside growth areas. I think there's also some information about affordable housing height restrictions. Are there some other things that we want to kind of hit and then?
Yep, there's one other growth ordinance thing I want to hit, which is, do you have a, does Cumberland have a cap? A growth area cap? Okay, municipality may not act, enact a rate of growth ordinance that limits residential development in designated growth areas. So you cannot have a cap in your designated growth areas. Yes.
Can, as the Comprehensive Plan Committee moves forward, can they limit or expand a growth area? And what are the limitations on either side of that?
So, the, this talks about how the town can enact a rate of growth ordinance that sets different limits on the number of building or development permits that are permitted in designated rural areas. And they cross out "and" designated growth areas. And then they say that a municipality cannot act rate of growth ordinances that limit development in designated growth areas. So you can really, they're trying to make a big distinction between the rural areas and the growth areas. And allowing you to, and it's kind of related to the, just the previous conversation we had about density. If you have true rural areas in your town that are outside growth areas and outside public water and sewer, you're kind of free to do with that as you wish. You can have growth caps, you can, you can do whatever you want in those areas. If you have designated growth areas, you're, it's grow, it's about grow. And so that's really the message for the Comp Plan Committee is to really make sure that the growth areas that you're designating are the areas that you really want growth. And if you have areas that you absolutely don't want to grow and don't want to have multifamilies or you want to leave pretty rural, then those are the areas that, again, are outside a growth area and don't have access to public water and sewer.
So assuming that this town of Cumberland had 500 acres in their growth area today, and then upon reviewing of the minimum lot size and number of structures, we decided that we only want to put 100 acres in our growth area. Are we likely to be flagged by the state as being too constrictive? Or is that fair game, or how would that play out?
They're not telling you what you can and cannot put in a growth area. They're telling you, once it is in a growth area, these are the rules that apply. It's possibly that two years from now, they're gonna start controlling how much you can put in a growth area, but this bill does not do that.
Yep, please.
Maybe this is for you, Bridgette. Is there currently, in making Comp Plan rules and stuff, is there currently a minimum growth area mandated for towns? Or is just whatever you want to designate a growth area is what you designated?
Correct, there is no requirement on how much you have to have. They have added sort of a transition area, so we're allowed to designate growth areas, transition areas, and rural areas.
Okay, thank you.
So that was the other growth area aspect, and that was for those, that was in Section 3, so on the first page. That rule, that new change is in Section 3. There's not a lot on the affordable housing that where did I have that, sorry, I had another note. I think the other, the affordable housing section is that additional height. So that is Section 5 on Page 2. And that allows if you are, you can have an affordable housing development, and this all relates back to LD 2003, so you have to be fitting the definition of what affordable housing development is under the statute. But you can allow them to exceed the municipal height restriction by no less than one story or 14 feet. This is an area where I hope they say either whichever is greater or whichever. They don't have that, they just have one story or 14 feet. And if any developers in the room, everyone has a different idea of what a story is, so. That's the affordable housing provision about the height allowance. A little different than LD 2003, they seem to dig more into subdivision here than they did the last one. So there's a couple of pretty big changes. The, and I'm gonna turn you now to, we're going down further. And we're at the bottom of Page 4, so Section 20. And it's, when you read it initially, it's hard to tell there's even any changes in that paragraph, but you will see. They kept, so for those of you, everyone's probably familiar with subdivision, three or more lots. The three, the division of land into three or more lots remains the same. But they changed the subdivision trigger for units within the same building to five. So someone can make, can divide a house, a building into two, three, four units and not trigger subdivision. It's now gonna be five units. So that's a big change. Moving on to probably a couple pages. So now, we're still in that section, but it's so long. We're now going to Page 6, there's some additional changes. Those are just kind of paperwork. This says a mortgage does not itself constitute a subdivision. I know we've had that question come up a lot, whether somebody, and you get that where there's a developer who wants to kind of put a mortgage on a, one unit or like, and kind of, it makes it look like it's gonna split up the lot and that will not trigger subdivision if somebody mortgages a part of a parcel. So I think, the five unit is really the big change in subdivision. I will point out Page 7, Section 21. This is one of those very questionable changes that doesn't seem to have a purpose.
Sorry, Mary, we don't have a, we don't have a Page 7.
Oh, you don't have this last page?
No.
Okay.
We have a map, yeah.
Do you have Section 21? Okay, well, I'm gonna read it. So if those, so there was a, this was not even LD 2003, this is a totally separate law that if you are in a town with a robust site plan ordinance, there's a section of the statute that allows you to go through that review process with the planning board and not also have to go through separate subdivision review. Essentially, the law is like, site plan's good enough, you don't also have to do this other thing. For some reason, they, so this was enacted in 2018. It said, beginning July 1st, 2018, like this is the rule. They cross that out and put January 1st, 2026. So effectively, between the effective date of this, which is, I can't remember what September date this is, but September something. So between September something and January 1st, this rule doesn't apply. And there's no time to fix it, really. So it's just kind of in this weird place. And then also that paragraph still has a reference to dividing a structure into three units instead of five. So that's probably a mistake that has to be corrected to five to be consistent. But just to be aware that that is out there for planning board members, et cetera, that this, there's just this little gap in that review process.
Steve?
Yep.
Mary, you've just confused me a bit. You referred to a September effective date, which would be typically 90 days from adjournment. But I thought, as I read the statute, it had its own built-in effective date of July 1, 2026. I don't-
That's the implementation date.
Well, so is this taking effect in September?
Yeah.
As opposed to next July?
Yes.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah. So it will, when the, when the reviser's office writes the new statutes, this will be on the books, but you still have, municipalities still have until, municipalities with council forms of government still have until July 1st to implement everything that's in there. But when you open, when you get online and you look at it, it's all, the words are gonna be in there. You don't have to comply with it yet. Same with LD 2003, on the effective date, it all appeared in the law, but you have an implementation date of, you had it of 2024. Did you?
Yeah, so just to confirm, we don't have to comply with it until July of 2026. Or if we get, if the planning board gets an application in October for, let me look at this handy graph we did over here. For, no, for five new dwelling units in a growth area on sewer and water, the application comes in October 2025, what is our obligation to comply with the state law?
Nothing.
Okay.
Not, well, you have to comply with state law, but you don't have to comply with anything in 1829.
This law.
Yeah, so you don't, you all don't, I just remembered, you all don't have the benefit of the last page. So I will read you this.
Thank you.
The last page, the paragraph says, "Application," Section 23. So "application" is different than "effective date." So it's effective, this bill is effective the 90 days after adjournment. So the words will appear. And then "application" says, "Notwithstanding any provisions of the law to the contrary." And then it goes through the various sections, the 38 sections, the 25 sections. "It applies to municipalities for which ordinances may be enacted by the municipal officers," so Cumberland, "without further action by the voters, beginning July 1st, 2026." And "all other municipalities," so town, meeting towns, July 1st, 2027.
So Mary, this is important for all of us, all the three groups here tonight. I don't understand the distinction between a law taking effect in September, but it's not applicable until the following July. It's, I don't know how we deal with that.
It's exactly what they did for LD 2003. All of the laws were uploaded into the system, written by the reviser's office and appeared. But there's a provision that says you don't have to, municipalities don't have to do this until July 1st. It was 2024, I think, at the time, 23, and they changed it the next year to 24. It's possible that in the next session, they're gonna give you another year, which they did, which they did for LD 2003. But it's just an implementation date.
So is that just kind of say that the single source of truth for the planning board is the current ordinance until, as is, until it is then amended? And we have to do that by July 1st, 2026?
You should do that by July 1st, 2026. And if you don't, and somebody comes in, you still have to apply this.
So normally, when we deal with affordable housing issues, there is a requirement, there is not only the carrot of you can have more dense building, there's a requirement that the units are sold within a certain price range. There is nothing in that, there's nothing governing what the houses that get built in these more dense areas will cost, correct?
There's nothing new. The affordable housing provisions from LD 2003 still are in effect. This doesn't change that at all.
And what are those?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but there were, there's definitions of what affordable means.
So these will, if you make, but this is changing zoning ordinances.
So there are various categories of, LD 2003 had a few areas of focus. A big area of focus was affordable housing, where it had definitions of affordability. I can't remember, it was 80%, 40%, 100%, whatever that was. And if you have to meet those definitions in order to take advantage of what LD 2003 provided, the two and a half density, all that stuff, that's still in effect, this doesn't change that at all.
Okay, so all of that goes out the window.
I don't know what that is.
If you are not going to build affordable housing, then you, the underlying zone standards as they exist now.
That's not, they're two different things.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So, so given this, if I, if I own a lot that is, you know, two acre housing right now, it's served by water and sewer, I'm outside the growth area, I can break that up into whatever, 20,000 square foot lots or 5,000, I guess, yeah. So I can put now 16 units on there, and what I sell those units for, I am not, I can sell them purely market rate.
Right, but if you, if you meet the definition of affordable, you get two and a half times the density.
Two and a half times that density?
Yeah. They haven't changed that. That's the existing, the existing rule.
Okay, so I guess, to me, those are two things that we need to raise as issues. One, you're, if the, if LD 2003 is still gonna multiply all that density by, or divide, really, or however you want to calculate density, that's gonna be an issue. So now you're at 1,250 square feet per unit. You're going to now divide that by two and a half, so you're somewhere around 500 square feet per unit?
There's nothing in here that references back to affordable housing that I've seen that takes that away.
Okay, and then, but then the other issue is- And then, but then the other issue is, again, if, if what we want is affordable housing, I'm not sure that's what we're going to get out of this. We're just going to get a lot more unaffordable housing. And I, I mean, I'm not, I, I know that's not, you're not doing that, but I mean, if, if we're giving feedback to Greg, because I know Greg back from when he was like Maine State Housing, whatever, I don't think his intent is just to create more sprawl. I think his intent is really to create more affordable housing. And there's nothing that requires this housing to be, there, this can generate a lot more housing, but that may take a long time to get enough housing that the new housing becomes affordable, and it may just stop. I mean, once, once we have enough housing that now when they build a house, it has to be sold at an affordable level, they're just not going to build it. They've already used up all the good land and made market rate, and there's going to be no land left that anybody wants to develop for affordable housing.
That's a, that's a policy discussion, yep, I get it. But that's, these provisions about the three and four houses and the density are not specific as to affordable. But that two and a half density still exists, so I guess there's, if you're, and, and they added a height bonus. So if that's enough of an incentive for you, it could be, I don't know. Any other questions on those topics? The other topic that they added a little more to is the ADUs. So they, they changed the definition of accessory dwelling unit just to, and, and changed the definition, but then also this kind of theme is carried through to make sure that it's clear that you can create an accessory dwelling unit in a multi-unit structure. It's not just what we all think about traditionally of a single family with an accessory dwelling unit. And I believe that, that definitional change may kind of take effect immediately. I don't think that was part of the July 1st. But that just takes effect, I, I think practically, that's the way it's been applied, but they just wanted to clarify that.
Where is that definition change?
Sorry, very first page, section two.
And just, this is maybe probably a question for Bob, Denise, and the folks on the planning board. Are we going to need to change, we're going to need to update our definition, this definition in our other ordinances to comply? Okay.
Yep. So this is one of those things where if, if this takes effect immediately, you would just be applying it. You don't have to make the change.
Okay.
There's a hand back there? Yep.
Bill Young, HEDRO. Just for clarity's sake, TIF 1. How's that going to change TIF 1?
Great question, which we will, as we dig it a little bit further, I think, start to talk about. It'll also be something the comprehensive plan talks about, too. So as far as their recommendations go.
Denise, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Where am I, section 12, sorry, section 11, that edit. I had to pull up the statute to understand what it was adding to, what it's talking about. Proving that essentially there's enough flow, septic, and water in order for a housing structure to be viable. But it's saying that towns cannot request additional review or documentation related to waste and wastewater requirements. It's prohibited now. Do we know why? Were towns trying to derail development by creating hoops to jump through? Is there, is this something the planning board sees often where we need to ask for additional information because they haven't proven enough that water is sufficient in sewer? Does this affect us in any way that you can think of? Or is this just, I'm just understanding, trying to understand why this?
I, I think this is probably, you know, a lot of these changes were driven by, you know, Marita and developers. I don't know if this was in the, which bill this was in, I did not, you know, we have a team of people that follow the procedure closer than, than I did. But this is, was probably seen as an obstacle in just trying to make things move faster and not have an obstacle to development.
Is there, I mean, all it says is verification from a local plumbing inspector. So is there no second opinion or vetting these? I'm looking at 11.
Page three, section 11.
It's in, it's in multiple places. You'll see it also in section 18. And so it says, "Upon receipt of written verification from a local plumbing inspector that a housing structure meets the requirements of the subsection additional review or documentation by a municipality related to waste and wastewater requirements before issuing a certificate of occupancy is prohibited." So essentially, if you have a, if you have a subsurface wastewater permit, you can't question it.
In, in practice, that's what happens right now anyways, and this is kind of a misleading statement.
Yep.
If, if a builder or a developer has a, an approved septic plan by a licensed septic evaluator, and he submits that to the building inspector who approves it and then inspects it upon build-out, there is never any further.
And that's the way it should work. It may, I mean, to your point, it might be somebody had a bad experience in a town where they tried to up, you know, hold something up based on that, and they just tried to get rid of it by putting this in there.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, do you think it has anything to do with if you are increasing the, say you have a septic system, okay, and it's built for a three-bedroom, you add an ADU or whatever to your property or another multi-unit building, but the septic, existing septic system is not in need of replacement? Aren't you able to file plans for the expansion of the septic system when it no longer can meet the needs?
You have to have, you have to have the new design in place before the building inspector will issue a, a building permit.
Yeah, but it doesn't need, the work doesn't need to be done until the septic system is. So the way I read this is that it needs to be done upon inspection, like to get a certificate of occupancy. You see what I'm saying? Doesn't matter, it's, but you get what I'm saying?
Sometimes the two pieces are done in concurrence. You might have a delay because your, your excavator can't get out there, and you've already built the structure, but you know that it's, he's coming next week to build the addition to your system. But you won't get the occupancy until it's inspected.
Jane Wilson, Range Road. I'm not, I'm naive about how public water and sewer expansion occurs. But my question is, if that does occur in any area of the town, does that immediately trigger different growth restrictions? Or is it just whatever is in existence when the law became effective?
It would be whatever is in existence at the time of an application for development. So if somebody applies to build, you know, for a four-unit structure, the density that applies at that time will depend on the classification of that lot. Is it in a growth area? Does it have water and sewer?
Into the mic, if you, could you, could you do it into the mic, please? Sorry, got folks at home.
I'm just thinking about neighborhoods who are like, we want public water. And it's like, well, if you want public water, then you're agreeing to live in a much more dense neighborhood, correct? And sewer.
And sewer.
Yeah, so that would be true.
Yep. Yep. All right. I just wanted to do, get back to ADUs really quick and just point out a couple other things. Was there another question on that topic?
One last question from Josh.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, but that brings up a good point, approved subdivision. If there's an approved subdivision which requires less density, that's an approved subdivision plan. You can't, like a developer can't just change the plan. If that's not compliant with the density here, does that, in other words, if somebody wanted to cut all the lots in half, double the lot?
They would go to the planning board for an amendment to their subdivision plan.
And would we have to provide that?
Yeah. Well, you would, you would review it under the, you would review it under the standards at the time. You'd revise, at the, you would review it under the standards applicable at the time of application. If it's a subdivision that's not been built yet, it's much easier.
Right, right. But, but existing subdivisions could then come back and say, we want to be able to double the lots or whatever, or add units, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, they're allowed to take advantage of the new law. So a couple of other things on ADUs. Section one on the first page is public sa, life safety about sprinklers. Then on page four, we're talking about kind of sections 16, 17. So as you know, with LD 2003, what's unique about an accessory dwelling unit as opposed to what we talked about before with three units, four units, is an accessory dwelling unit does not have to meet any additional density requirements. So you can have your unit on your 5,000 square foot lot, and you could also add an accessory dwelling unit without having to do another 5,000 square feet. Section 16 clarifies that you can only do that once. You can't have two accessory dwelling units that each get exempt from the density requirements, just one. It also cleared up an area of, where there was not clarity, that a municipality cannot require that it be someone's primary residence or owner occupied in order to have an accessory dwelling unit. You can have an accessory dwelling unit in, on a property where the owner does not reside. You can still have restrictions on short-term rentals if you do, but you can't have, you can't require it to be owner occupied.
I have a really stupid question, and I'm sorry. Okay, so if I have my, my primary homestead and I have an accessory dwelling unit on it, that tax bill is just coming to me, right? And it's factoring in the accessory dwelling unit as well as the primary residence. They're not two separate property tax bills, even though they're two separate, like, structures, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's a smart question. Well, I was embarrassed to ask it, so thank you for your support. Other questions?
Oh, Andrew, and then?
So going back to the section one, for the fire protection. If you have a two-unit, and you put an ADU on there, the ADU has to be sprinkled?
It's a good question.
But the two-unit doesn't?
I don't know.
Do you have to, like, go back and sprinkle the two-unit?
I think that requires some, I have a note there that I think that requires some clarification. Yeah, I agree with you. I think it's also not clear that, I think we can all read it to assume that the ADU is the third, but it also kind of, you can also read it that it almost is the second. So I think that could use some clarification, but it's a good point. But I don't know the answer to that. It wouldn't really make sense to only have the one and not all, but it's hard to retrofit for sprinklers, though, too. Okay. Let me just make sure that I, there's mandatory training now for land use boards. And the other one that I wanted to, I know there was one other sort of non-categorized section. Oh, this was kind of in the realm of subdivision and these three and four units. I don't know what you all require now, but it says that the town cannot require planning board approval for four or fewer dwelling units in the same structure. So if you currently require subdivision of, well, subdivision, they're changing the definition, so it's no longer, it's now it's five to trigger subdivision. But if you required site plan review for, for units in a structure, you can no longer do that. Did you have a question?
Going back to the ADU discussion, I think I heard, and I want to know if it's, if it's accurate, because it would change that chart over there just a little bit. So in the left-hand column, where you've got 5,000 square feet, 1,250 per the first four units, should there be another line that says plus one ADU? I think that's what you were saying.
So no, no matter where you are, whether you're, any of those columns, you can add an ADU. You still have to meet dimensional requirements, you have to meet setbacks, all that kind of stuff, but you don't have to meet an additional per dwelling unit density to add an ADU. You can essentially, it's a, it's a freebie.
Sure.
It's always been that way, they, since 2000, since LD 2003. They were just clarifying that you can only do that once.
This may be also an intelligent question, but, so it, it's clear to me that now our, we have no ability to restrict in a designated growth area, but it is within our power to designate a growth area. So can you review that process, especially as we think about our comp plan? Because, yeah, how, how do we designate a growth area?
Great question.
So that will be the result of the comprehensive plan to redraw, redefine growth areas, if that is the will of the comp plan committee.
And then the other question is, how do we, what's the town process for expanding public water and sewer? How does that happen?
Money.
Lots of money.
A council decision?
So, did you have something on that item, Bob?
Associated with that, if I follow along, particularly with Josh's question about a density bonus, if you build affordable housing, the trump card that I see here being played by the town or the municipality is, is setbacks. So setbacks are not being changed in any place by the state or by the towns. The underlying zoning of each zone has a certain setback.
Yep.
And typically, that, that probably is not going to get changed. People build a neighborhood and they assume that when they come in, you know, it's 15-foot side back setbacks, front setbacks, rear setbacks. And when you start trying to jam a lot of housing on 5,000 square feet or 1,250 square feet, you're going to run up against the setbacks. And I think with, what Josh is asking about density bonuses for affordability, you, you are constrained even further. Am I correct?
You are correct. The only thing is that you, you cannot have more stringent dimensional requirements for multi-housing than you do for single. So if you allow a single-family house to be set back 20 feet from the front edge, that has to be the same for multi-family. You can't say, but if you're multi, you have to be 75 feet. You can't do that. It all has to be the same.
But remember, you get an extra floor.
Right.
So, I mean, you could go, you could easily have six units in a 2,000-square-foot footprint. Thousand, three floors of thousand-foot units.
So if someone were to buy a lot in town center district, it's within a growth area on sewer and water, you could potentially put a fair amount of units and be at 54 feet tall with the same setbacks as the underlying zoning.
So your, your elevation is going to be the outlier.
Potentially.
I do want to look back to, sorry, just before Jane asked a question about how do we expand water and sewer, which I think is a pretty important thing to talk about. Matt, I don't know if you want to jump in there a little bit. My understanding is that we're in discussions with Portland Water District about, you know, a tank on top of Blueberry Hill, right? But that comes down to kind of their timeline, their funding, because, unless we were to put money into it ourselves, which we would as a council and as a, as a community decide to do. Is that kind of a fair, what, you give us the operational side, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, you're looking at capacity on the sewer side, and it's a lot more expensive on the sewer side than it is the water side, obviously, because you're talking about a lot more infrastructure and where you have to run it to. When you're talking about water, there's, you know, there's quite a bit of water that is there. It's not as expensive to run, but it's still about 750 to a thousand bucks a foot type of thing. So you can spend a million dollars really fast and not really make a lot of impact. So that's about the density there. However, you look at that to be a capital expenditure if it was the town side, unless it was planned by Portland Water District, for instance, as, as Chair Philson was saying. Looking at the, you know, long-term plans of Portland Water District is to, you know, right now, the town... right now, the town, and when Mineral Springs was done, extended under the turnpike and then went up all the way to where the development's going in. They've got long-term plans to come down from Babbage Road, Falmouth Road, down Blackstrap and tie into that, which would increase the capacity. But that's, that's their, that's their ticket at their expense. So a lot, a lot of it's based on what their expansion plans are as well.
But just to put a fine point on it, is this the first time in history that that is now affecting our zoning and our development? So public water and sewer as a town decision to affect our, our density and our lot size, this is the first time that's happened?
Oh, no, yeah, that, that's been there for a long time, as far as, because you have smaller lots, because you don't, if you have sewer, you don't have to worry about having a contamination of, of, you know, of your well water.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And then if you have, if you have public water.
But it's just greatly changing.
Yeah.
And if also, and correct me if I'm wrong here, so one of the allowable uses of TIF funding is expansion, right, of, it'd be under fire protection, I think, right? And so we could also look to use TIF funds to expand water. Is that correct?
Yeah, and the town has in the past. Range Road is an example of that. When, when the water was on there, that was a municipally funded project, and mostly because of the, of the, of the need. So oftentimes you look at that, and if there's, you know, towns are motivated for different reasons. Oftentimes it's groundwater contamination or, or water quality concerns that exist out there. A lot of towns have had salt in the past, and that's driven them to come up with a municipal water supply, or you find an area that might have high levels of arsenic or other, you know, we all live in the same area, there's arsenic, there's uranium, there's all kinds of lovely fiends underwater that are there that would inspire folks to want to do, do that expansion. So if you can do that, the greater impact you can find for the public benefit. Oftentimes towns will find a municipally compelling reason to, to make that investment.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Did, Mike, did you? Okay, yep.
I think maybe for the comp plan committee, it just made me think something that's going on in other towns. I don't know if Cumberland has this rule, but there are towns neighboring, for instance, Yarmouth has a, an ordinance. I found out this week, no one quite knows why, they've just been living with it. But the ordinance says that if you're within two hundred feet of existing sewer, then you must connect, and that's your lot. You know, and we had an example over there, where someone had a fourteen-acre lot on a one road that was sewer, but they were building nine hundred feet away down the side road. And that's what's, what you need to be careful of is where that's happening in rural areas, where you have three-acre zoning. So look at that, and, and if you have that type of ordinance, be careful, because it's really coming up against this new law that you're sort of pushing out into rural areas with infrastructure that suddenly aren't three acres anymore, it's five thousand square feet. So that should be looked at.
Great point. Great point. That's a pretty common requirement, because you're, you're paying to build the system, and you don't want it just sitting there, you want to make, you want people to use it.
But it doesn't pay for itself at three acres.
I, I know, I know, but it's, it's a pretty common requirement.
Mike?
So, thank you for being here. If, if I read section two correctly, differential ordinances, we can, according to this, if we want to get a handle on the growth in the rural areas and not end up with a huge expansion in those.
Yep.
We can, right now, our permits are town-wide. We have sixty-five permits, sixty-five building permits for the whole town.
Mm-hmm.
But we can limit it, we can go down to five in a rural area for a year.
Yep.
And then have everything else in the growth area, is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Denise?
Following on that, Mike, something to consider in the future, like, we could also look at what Scarborough's done, where X amount of permits per square footage to encourage smaller developments, and, you know, only give out a handful of four thousand square foot permits, that type of thing. I have a question, unless no one else has a question?
Well, this, this new statute does say that you cannot enact a rate of growth ordinance that limits residential development in designated growth areas.
Correct.
So that might be seen as limiting.
What if it's not in a growth area, that it doesn't apply, right?
Right, but you mentioned smaller lots, I was just assuming it was a growth area.
No.
Oh, okay.
Just in general, outside of the growth area, I guess.
Gotcha, okay.
Do, right now, the process for an ADU, someone on the planning board probably, do, for just a single ADU, if you're doing on your own property or whatever, and you have access to sewer and water, do you have to submit through the whole process? And part of that is seeing if there's enough flow and sewer capacity as part of just an ADU, regular ADU?
Currently, my name is Bill Longley, I serve as your code enforcement officer. I issue the permits for the ADUs. And they're, if they're on water and sewer, they have a sewer connection permit.
Okay.
That we charge to connect into the sewer for that ADU. If they're on a septic system, they have what's called an HHE two hundred. It's a design by a licensed site evaluator for the state, and they propose a septic design to meet the use of that site. And that's what I review and sign off on to allow the permit to be issued.
Okay, cool. I was wondering if, because we're increasing density on existing sewer and water, but I was thinking about, we do want to encourage infill development and have people, you know, build ADUs all over the place if they want. And so I was just curious if we're tracking those little developments as well in the context of this and capacity down the line, like sewer capacity? Because that could be an issue potentially. Because your, your infill development is limited by the capacity, essentially.
If, if I may, Madam Chair?
Please.
There is, there, because we, the town of Cumberland sends its, its sewage to Falmouth.
Falmouth, yeah.
And to their wastewater treatment facility, and up and back of Route One. And there are plans there for expansion of their capacity as well. So they're, that's their near-term strategy as well. So they, they know that, you know, growth is going to happen. I wonder how this might play into that long-term planning, if they say, well, this changes a bit, and we need to look at that and say, let's, let's expand that capacity even greater. So, you know, oftentimes that's, that's paid for by the rate payers. So to the point about, about wanting people to connect, you know, more, many hands make light work, so to speak, and sharing the bill like that across a larger number of subscribers at that point lessens the impact, but, but ultimately that's paid by, by rate, rate payers.
Okay. Yep, please.
Bob LeBlanc, planning board. One of the questions that, and I do some, being on the point of what I actually have some personal development stuff that I do, a couple of my friends in Falmouth, actually, they have, like, Comeon has, they have a specific number of units to be built, at sixty-five or whatever Mike mentioned the number was. And one of the things I'm thinking about is, a friend of mine had to go before the town of Falmouth, because a development, two developments took up all the current yearly approvals. And at sixty-five, if you guys have five thousand square foot, if it's going to be dense or development in town, you could easily leave, you know, by approving one or two projects in January or February, leave any homeowners that want to build in the rural areas, you know, out for a year or two. So when you talk about how do you limit that, I think that's what this bill is trying to not limit that to that degree. And if you have, maybe you have to decide it into growth and non-growth area, building permit. So there's, they're not shot out. And I know they made some exceptions in Falmouth based on that process, because people were in, you know, you've got, you know, mortgages and, and building permits and couldn't build, and had to go before the town and say, hey, what do we do now?
Wow.
So it's something to think about, you know, how does that process work within the regular, you know, normal single-house development in the town of Comeon as we continue to grow, you know, at a certain rate?
That's a great point. Yep, Andrew, and then Mr. Ert, did you have something specific to that?
Just in his comment, that, of course, we've, we've had the sixty-five growth ordinance for, gosh, I, I think twenty years now, and we never once have reached the sixty-five. And probably the reason that we haven't is that we exempt fifty-five and older residences, and a lot of what's been constructed in the town over the last few years between Ocean View and the development out on Route One and a couple more, that they've really been the majority. But Bob does raise a legitimate point. Remember back when we first enacted that, we only allowed like five for shabig? And there was a land rush where about twenty people stormed the town hall to get building permits. So I think as this thing, as we enact these ordinances, we still exempt the fifty-five because they're not putting people in the school system and are, are not using a significant amount of town services. But yeah, if we, especially in these growth areas, I mean, somebody who now owns an acre lot in a growth area on Main Street, for instance, will, you know, hit the lottery. So, good point on Bob's part, but right now, we have never met the sixty-five unit in, in the twenty years of the ordinance.
Sort of on, on the growth ordinance, it says municipality may not enact a rate of growth ordinance. Does that mean that our, that our current growth ordinance, our current, you know, permit ordinance is okay? We just can't change it? Or does it mean that, you know, does it really say that you can't have any rate of growth ordinance in a growth area?
I think it means you just can't have it. If, if they would have added a date that said, you know, for ordinances enacted after July first, twenty twenty-six, that's typical drafting language, but you're picking out a lot of the things that are not clear. It says that, but it probably means you can't enforce an ordinance that has a growth restriction, but that's another area we could seek clarity.
So, so it reads enact as at any time in the history of town, this has been enacted, as opposed to after this bill's been passed, then doing something?
Right, they, they would typically have that additional language in a statute, if it meant ordinances enacted after a certain date, it would say that.
Oh, sorry. Kind of following on to that, like, only being able to restrict permits outside of the growth zone, I think that's kind of the intent. I'm guessing you want to designate your growth areas and then not restrict building there to build. That's the point. So I don't imagine someone's going to try to build a multi-unit development away from public water, sewer, amenities, things like that. So I don't really, hopefully, don't see that being an actual issue, having sixty-five permits outside of growth areas. But yeah, something to keep in mind.
What would be the intent of? Microphone.
My gosh. What would be the intent of restricting growth outside of, like, why?
I know that, well, I don't want to put words in Scarborough's mouth, but essentially, I think they were having issues with a bunch of McMansions being built, like massive ones, and then school enrollments skyrocketed, because there were all these massive houses being built with lots of large families. And so they're like, let's limit that, and then you can have a bunch of small homes, like, go for it, with either a single or maybe two-bedroom units, as opposed to massive houses.
I just, never mind.
Helps them smooth out their anticipated growth in other areas, too.
Yeah, I just think that when we went through this whole affordable housing building, that was one of the biggest qualms, was the concern about enrollment in the schools, so...
I guess it depends on the unit size. Like, if you're able to make units now that are basically studios, a bunch of them, or it's fifty-five and up housing, or things like that.
Yeah.
People make assumptions about how many children will be there.
Yeah.
Even though there's lots of kids being raised by their grandparents, so it's speculation. But yeah, I get where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Bob, you have something?
I think when you, when you talk about our communities' plan growth as a comprehensive plan is, and they're reviewing the, the results of the survey and trying to figure out what the town wants, and then you bump up against landowners and landowners' rights, you know, at no point can a community constrain a homeowner from selling his land and developing it to, to some aspect. And that's why we have zoning, RR one, RR two is, is a two primary examples. So the, you know, the state is, at some level, trying to step in and say, we're going to negate that, and we're going to create incentives for, you know, more, more housing, and more density, and, and, you know, and I think that's great, as long as we can direct that towards affordability. You know, I'm, I'm not in favor of any housing being constructed, period. But I will, I will, you know, put my neck on the block, if you will, for, for affordable housing. And I think a lot of us feel that way, you know. Do we need more five-acre lots with a single-family home on it? Is that good use of land? Probably not. So, but I think there's a balancing act, and I think that's the comprehensive plan's job, is to balance that out based on the new constraints that the state has proposed upon us. I think in, in a, in a practical world, ADUs are not a panacea. They're, they're expensive, they're, you know, you know, we're approaching, you know, five hundred dollars a square foot for cost, and when you add infrastructure and utilities and septic system upgrades, you know, yes, some people are going to find a way to, you know, build four units going straight up. And, but I think in general, I don't think we're going to see a, you know, a gold rush to the west to, to build small lots on, you know, small, many homes on small acres.
I feel like we're commingling two different conversations. Like, I feel like the intent of this is to develop more housing, and I think, like, Bob, it might be your personal, your personal objective, or your standing kind of thought on developing affordable housing. But I think the goal of this is just to, like, I don't think it's, they're meant to be commingled at this point. I think the discussion is surrounding how we're zoning, how much building is there, what we're allowing. And then if someone chooses to build, build affordable housing, great, but I don't think the two are, I don't think that's the intent of this, is my...
It's housing.
Housing. So just, I just want to stay focused on that's just housing. Okay.
Denise, and then, Mike, did you have your hand up, or am I saying things?
I don't.
Okay, Denise.
I mean, Christina did say that they want feedback, and I think Josh's point makes a lot of sense. Like, if you're going to have the first two units being a certain square footage, why is it not affordable? I feel like the two do go together, and they should go together.
Yeah.
Because, sure, you're dictating my first two units are going to be this way, and then I can do whatever I want with the others, so why not make those first ones affordable by statute? So I vote for that to be feedback for them to look into if they're taking it. It sounds like they are.
Feedback to the legislature.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
Oh, come on up, Christina, here comes the legislature.
Your notepad.
I think your point, Bailey, is correct. The intent, my understanding of it, is housing.
Yeah.
And yes, affordable housing, which is addressed in some other bills, is a goal, but it's so dire.
Yeah.
We don't just need affordable housing and low-income housing, which is a whole other topic, we need housing. And what I heard discussed was, once we start getting housing, that people can, who don't need affordable housing, can just get housing, that will ease up the availability, they can move out of some places, and then there can be more places available to get affordable housing. So yes, it's definitely connected, but I understand this particular goal, Bill, the goal is housing. And I, while I'm up here, I'll just mention, yeah, July first, that's, that's the effective date of, the reason it, it goes into effect in September, when bills go into effect, now that they're approved, it's to give you time to do exactly all the hard work you guys got to do. So, July first.
Maybe this is a question for Bridgette and Matt in the planning board, and I guess everyone, but how are we, there is a massive about that has to be looked at, addressed, updated. So what is our plan of attack for operationalizing this?
So what is our plan of attack for operationalizing this?
Yeah, I think it's kind of a two-phase thing. The first one would be is that we will take a look. We've already, as probably the town council has noticed, that the planning board has sent you a lot of ordinances where we've originated them. So my suspicion is that we will proba, Bridgette will probably take a look at some of the low-hanging fruit that's there, that can be enacted without anything with the, to do with a comprehensive plan. And you'll begin to see some stuff coming from us on that. Would that be a correct assumption, Bridgette?
Sure. I think that, I think the town staff's plan is to lean on the town attorney to kind of look at this. It's, it's a surprise. It's, I mean, it, there's a lot, but also it's defined by the state. So there's a lot that we need to kind of go through, do redefinitions and things like that. So, I mean, I think between, between Mary and I, we should be able to have it accomplished. I don't see any problem with the July one deadline. I mean, we're not the only ones who have this going. Everyone's going to have to comply.
I think the actual, like, the actual drafting is not difficult. Understanding the impact, I think, is the hard, like, the analysis of understanding, like, what does that mean? And so maybe like the very initial thing is just, okay, if we were to just take this, apply it exactly as it is, not change where our growth areas are, not change any of the zoning. What's the impact? What does that mean? And what areas are left untouched and what areas, wow, that's twelve fifty per unit for four. I don't think we want that there. You know, it's more about seeing what that impact is and seeing if you need to kind of move some things around in reaction to this, as opposed to just like, straight-out implementation, easy. Like, we could write that next week and you could be done. But it's what does it mean and what do you want to do about it is what would take the time.
Well, sure. And I mean, I think if I was listening or tracking what you were saying, there may be additional changes and clarifications coming from the state, right, Christina? Yeah, and so what my concern would be is, okay, so if that's in the January timeframe, right, and our comprehensive plan is expected, you know, in April, that's not giving us a lot of runway to think really thoughtfully in making sure that we're putting all of this together in a way that's supposed to be our guiding light for the next ten years, right? And so I think that we may, maybe I'm off here, but the idea of then having to, if we have a bunch of changes in January, February, and that gives us a different lens to attack certain elements of the comprehensive plan, like, we don't want to be rushed to do that. We want to be able to think about and talk about those things thoughtfully.
I, I imagine the legislative process, correct me if I'm wrong, happening one of two ways. One, it's just a fix-it bill. They're clarifying a couple of things, like we mentioned tonight, that are not very clear and it doesn't really make a lot of sense. And you still have a July one deadline because the big stuff hasn't changed. If they go in and change the big stuff, they'll give you more time. They did that with LD 2003.
What she said.
Okay, great.
And I would just add the September, thank you. I would say the September clarification that is going to come down from Moca and Dekka, which, don't ask me what those mean again, Department of Education, education, economic development. There, in September, what they're giving, offering all the town planning, all councils and planning boards, is further guidance, not, not new rules or anything and not anything big changing. Just like, you brought up something like, ooh, okay, we'll clarify that.
Great. Yeah, they did guidance for 2003, so I imagine it would look similar, the guidance that will come out.
I would just say that in this case, the mentality of the planning board makes this a little easier because we don't have to, like, you guys have to worry about what people think and try and thread a needle. We just, this for us is, we may like it, we may not like it, it is what it is. I am glad Steve is running that, I'm glad I'm not Steve. I'm glad Steve is running it because he's been on the planning board. And I think there could be the tendency to think that the comp plan can, like, adjust what these rules are. And that's obviously not the case. That, you know, the comp plan can try and take these rules and, and work with them. But these are, I mean, unless there's wholesale changes, this is what we've got. So, but for us, that's easy. It's either allowed or not allowed.
Congratulations. I like that use of terminology, wholesale change.
Oh, yep, oh, Penny, and then back to Denise.
Hi, Penny Asherman, 12 Hemlock Drive, Cumberland. I think it would be really helpful if there were real-life scenarios. So if we took, like, an area of Cumberland and we applied this law, what does that mean? And just here, reading the statute, I'm a lawyer, but reading the statute and understanding, like, what that means for every particular lot or in a particular area is really difficult. So I think you might allay some theories, some fears, if you went through a little bit of scenario planning, like implementation, so that everybody could understand a little bit better, well, I'm an MDR, so what does that mean for my lot? I'm on Range Road and RR1, what does that mean for, for my area? So I think it just might be really helpful if we could practically understand what the impact is, where the sewer is, where the water is, what zone, what, you know, what zone you're in. And I think that might be, it might be five different scenarios, it might be four, according to the attorney. So if we just had a little bit of visual and words together, I think that would be really helpful for everybody.
Agreed. Denise? I was basically going to be, my question is, whoever makes maps, can we have a map that is current zoning, current growth areas with existing water and sewer, just all in the same map? And I'm sure that's already happening, but, because I think that will, that's the visual, seeing what, what can be moved, what isn't even possible because there's no water and sewer there. Hello?
Hi. There's also a lot at play with the amount of land that Cumberland has in conservation. So we had a fantastic intern who worked through some data to work on a developable areas map, which had growth areas and set some priorities. And this is kind of a work in progress for the Comprehensive Plan Committee to say where, where do we want growth? Where do we not want growth? But I think that could be helpful. It addresses proximity to water and sewer, those kind of things. So, yeah, well, we can, I think, everything, moving Penny, that you've said, and Denise with mapping, we can look at, what does, what does this look like? What does this look like for me? I also just want to touch on the fact that through the comprehensive planning process, we, there's a possibility that zoning, there could be recommendations to change zoning as well. And so with hand-in-hand with what's going on at the state level, what's going on with comprehensive planning, I mean, there could be, there's the potential for a lot of recommendations for a lot of different changes to happen through, through ordinances, through the land use across the town. So there's a lot of moving parts. We can track it and try and provide as much information as possible in whatever different outlets we need to, words, maps. I think that's all super helpful as we try to understand what the impact is.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Speaking of your amazing intern, it might be good also, I recall from her presentation, there are certain zones that have very, very high percentages of non-conforming lots. Ha ha. And so, so back to what Penny said, you know, you may be in a certain zone, but then the lots aren't conforming and, hey, what it, like, how, people might not know or understand. And so I feel like that's also something that we really should be drilling into as a part of that process, right? Because it's, it's pretty high, I think we are in like the high eighties in some places, right? For the percentages of non-conforming?
Grandfather.
Grandfather, yep. But just from a practical perspective, it might be helpful for people to understand as we roll this out. Sorry, Steve, I think you were going to say something.
I was just going to have the sidebar.
Please.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Just one item to consider is, it's a, it's a good opportunity, actually. If you think about, you know, first of all, this is very new. You know, and so as you can tell from, you know, Attorney Kostigan presenting, there's a lot of moving parts still. Guidance is coming, as Representative Mitchell has said. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot coming at towns all at once. Cumberland has an advantage, I think, at this point because, A, you are doing a comp plan and your zoning needs to be consistent with your comp plan to have everything. So in order to make some of these changes, the town also has the opportunity to be mindful of, of how this is going to line up with future land use options that are there. Obviously, the challenge on that is going to be, how does that impact, as Penny said, how's, how do you really want to squeeze the balloon? And where's the pressure going to go to? And how do you want to direct that development and do that? So I think through the comp plan process and the planning board process, and then with the council ultimately setting zoning to where it's going to be, you can, you have the opportunity to be mindful of a three-step process where a lot of towns really only have one or two opportunities at this. And then they're going to have to go back and take a look at their comp plans and find out how they can get that to be in compliance with that. And so you, so I look at it optimistically because that's kind of how I look at things. But, but if you are going to find, if you're going to have this be the time and place where you had to monkey with all three items at once, I think we got the great, a great team to do it and, and the right time. So you can kind of, I guess, take advantage of the opportunity.
Sounds great to me. Thanks for the positive perspective, as always. Hopefully Bridgette feels that way, too. Go team. Other questions? Bob?
I'd just like to read something from the, one of our ordinances. It's growth management, and I think this puts things in perspective for where we are and where we're going. The purpose of the growth management, to plan for continued residential population growth of Cumberland, which be compatible with orderly and gradual expansion of community services, including but not limited to education, public safety, transportation infrastructure, waste disposal, and health services. To avoid a situation in which the rapid development of new residents, potentially housing many families with school-aged children, could outpace the county's capacity, capability to expand its schools and other services soon enough to avoid serious school overcrowding and a significant reduction in other services. I don't think the comp plan or the council or the planning board, none of us are going to depart from that with, you know, any degree of, you know, wild ideas. The town wouldn't allow it and I think we'd find ourselves up against it in a hurry. So I think that pretty much lays out, you know, the responsibilities of where the town lies and how much capacity we have for any of this, regardless of how the state plays in. And or if, I think, you know, the reality is if we, if the comp plan felt that there was going to be significant building permits pulled, the growth area would be closed down. If we felt that there was not going to be impact, then that growth area may be enlarged. And I think that's, that's, that's the work of the comp plan.
Bob, I would just say that, sure, that's a nice, I think that's a wonderful goal.
How, what, how many growth permits did we issue, like, on average in the past five years, roughly, ballpark?
Thirty to forty.
So right there with sixty-five, I mean, you could double it. And some of those are probably currently in growth areas. So call it, triple it and then jack it up in the growth areas and you got a lot of growth. And there's not a lot we can do about that. So I think this is sort of what I was saying with the, with the comprehensive plan is, you can, you can nibble at the edges and maybe shrink the growth areas and other things. But I think what the comprehensive plan also has to factor in is, okay, we may be growing a lot. And that isn't all bad, but how are we going to manage that growth? And it may not be able to, we may not have the control to make it fit as nicely, a nice, smooth curve. I mean, my guess is we're going to see some pretty rapid growth when people take advantage of the new zoning allowances. And then that will probably calm down.
Bailey and then Stacy?
Yeah, I think, just to echo your sentiment, too, it's like, you know, we talk about this ideology of building like smaller, smaller buildings, smaller homes, which in theory might sound great, but the residual effects of that are the relocation of people in existing homes who might not have kids moving into those smaller homes and then kids taking that over, right? And you're getting more kids and it's all just this cycle. So I think, in theory, it sounds great, but I think that we're just kind of on this, to your point, like, it's a little bit of a merry-go-round, it ebbs and flows. And, and I'd be interested to see what other towns are doing from a, from a zoning perspective, from a growth management perspective. Because I, as much as I want to put restrictions into place, I also think it's unrealistic. I don't know.
Stacy?
What you're saying, Bob, is comforting. That's the way I, what you're saying is comforting. That's the way I would like to see Cumberland look at this. I feel that the state has mandated otherwise. It just feels as though we're, and I'm not against growth, I'm just saying it's, it's a real, it does manacle a lot of our power as a town to do what we want to do as a town. That's just my feeling. So thank you for saying something comforting.
Mike?
Stacy, I couldn't agree more with you and Bob. Bob read what you just said. You know, to me, this is the legislature sticking their nose where it didn't belong. Cumberland's done a great job in planning our growth areas, planning what we want to see, keeping the character of the town. But the legislature said, well, we know better than you. We know better than you and we're going to have a one-size-fits-all law that, and it's, it's, this is a ridiculous piece of legislation. And the fact they voted in, they should be embarrassed. And it's an insult to towns, to planning boards, to council, comp plans. And I just think it's, it's, it's a terrible way to do government.
May I just say, I agree completely. Thank you.
Let me just be devil's advocate a little bit. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but if we believe the numbers and Maine is eighty thousand residential housing units short, and every town is going, I'm managing growth smartly and something's got to change. Now, maybe we didn't, maybe we don't like how the state did it, but maybe we should have done something differently before and maybe then the state wouldn't be putting its heel on our throat right now. But that's, I mean, we are where we are and we need more residential housing. And I may not like the exact, there may be things in here I don't like, but I think something's got to change.
Sure.
So I've done a lot of development and I'm usually on the planning board. But, you know, I've been in a lot of, I did a lot of stuff, mind you, here when they changed the zoning and it was a lot more dense and they did, went through all our processes. And I've seen it go back and forth a number of times. And as a developer, there's a lot of things, I know there's some concern about twelve hundred fifty square foot units in the first two. And that almost, it could work on a, like a ranch, but it doesn't work very well on, like, multi-story residential buildings because of, you know, elevator access and stairwells and fire code. And there's a million reasons why it's hard to build multi-unit buildings. They're not easy to build. One of the things I think we got to concern ourselves with is talking about moving or adjusting the growth area because it's going to change the character of Main Street and Tuttle Road or wherever there's water and sewer. And there's going to be people that want to come in and do, you know, you look at what they've done across Edge Battery and Westbrook. You're going to look, that's what you're looking at for multi-unit, multi-development, where it's going to be some houses, it's going to be some residential. There's going to change, there's going to be some larger parcels that's going to change the whole character of, and the neighbors, and the neighborhood is going to be, you know, the town, like you said, they're putting your heel on their neck. But you want to think about where you want to run your growth areas so you're not changing the whole character of certain places you want to keep the same. And it's going to be a lot of unhappy and happy, depending on who you are, you know? But, you know, I grew up in Cumberland and I'm from Cumberland. And I live here because I want a certain aspect, which Mike and I grew up together and, you know, you're here for a reason. But I think if you don't look at where that growth area is located and leave it alone. But I think if you don't look at where that growth area is located and leave it alone, you know, I think you're going to have, if every town changes that, they're going to say, hey, you can't change your growth area. We're going to go back to, so you have to be cognizant of how much you change and where. But I think the biggest issue is it's really hard to develop, you know, it's not easy to build, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty units. There's not a lot of people that do it, you know, or a hundred, or whatever the number's going to be, what Bill has to deal with. But there's going to be some people coming in that, if this changes next July, next spring, we'll be looking at development deals where, you know, they're going to, Cumberland's an attractive town to build in. And, you know, I think the character issue is going to be your biggest, as a council, your biggest issue to deal with of how is that going to affect the look of the town and where? And the school's going to be the second thing, is, you know, how does it handle that influx? Because it's probably going to happen, but that's what the state wants. And as a planning board member, like Peter said, it's pretty easy for us to look at the rules and vote on it. And I think that, you know, I've done, I've been on both sides of this, this issue. And even in towns as dense as Portland, it's very difficult to get it done. So you're going to have, I would say, two or three projects at a time at the most, but they're going to have two or three early on. They're going to be the test of how and where and when you're going to do what you want to do. And it's going to come, I know the timeframe from already said, oh, we can write the ordinance easy, but it's, you've got to decide how you want to write it. And that's, and that's not a lot of time between now and July first.
Thank you. Any final thoughts? Yep, come on up.
Hi, my name's Casey Hughes, two fifty Greeley Road. First, I think the only thing I'd like to start off with is, wow, holy cow, what is going on at state level? And, you know, and I think that, you know, Bob and Mike's comments and about the character of the town and how it's changed. It's changed so much in the past fifty-five years since I've been here. But what we've got to look at, the bigger picture, is we're taxing our people right out of town. The school, good God, can the University of Cumberland get any bigger? And how many kids are going to get generated by all these new little houses that are going to pop up? I'm all for some growth, but I think it's got to be fairly restricted. And I think after listening to our attorney and everybody else here, the only thing I can maybe see as a way out is to reduce the growth zones. You know, maybe there's a way we can, you know, change it. And my hats off to you all, planning board, the comprehensive, the town council, hats off. You guys are doing yeoman's work. This is hard, and there's a lot of moving parts, to say the least. But I just think we've got to look at what's going to happen to us in the long term. That impact statement, I think what Bobby made in that comment, is a hundred percent on terasque. Because we're, I'm scared. I mean, I've got a nice house, I love my house, I worked very hard for a lot of years to get to retire in that house. And I don't know, with the taxes jumping up the way they are, whether I can stay in that house many more years. And I don't have kids in the school system, and I opted out of Cassella's Way, so I put a dumpster in my yard. But, you know, there's a lot of things we're going to have to look at, and I don't know how you're going to be able to accomplish it fast enough. That's what I'm afraid of. And hats off to you guys for trying to do it. I mean, it really is, it's a big, big-ticket item in a real fast fashion. And I don't know, you know, I don't like how the state has, you know, issued a mandate to how we run our town. But it's, I guess it's the law, and Christine, good luck. Try and reel it in a little bit, but holy cow. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final thoughts, or else we'll recess before our next meeting?
I'm Mike Doyle, I live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I don't have a dog in this fight, but I'm surprised that no one has mentioned the development in Scarborough. It's enormous. The Scarborough Downs complex is so big, Market Basket is putting a store in that complex. And that's unheard of for them to put a store in a apartment complex. That's how big it is. And I've been all over Scarborough. If you look at the southeast corner of Scarborough towards the ocean down past the turnpike, there's a complex down there. It's got to be fifteen or sixteen or twenty-four and five-story buildings. They're huge, they're hundred-unit buildings, and they're all over the place. If this is what Cumberland's looking at, you better go down and check out Scarborough, see what they're doing, because it's a huge amount of development being done. And I think they're on the front end of this density problem. But I don't know if you guys have looked at it at all. Is anyone here gone down and looked at the Scarborough situation? It's enormous. So I just thought I'd mention it, but you might want to take a look at it before you make any final decisions.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Hill, two forty-four Greeley Road, lived next to Casey. I was going to wait till the council meeting to talk just on a few points, but I figured I'd just get it done. I was very surprised for Bob to say, didn't you say you didn't want any building? And you're the builder on the town council. So it's like, I don't want any building. I don't think when this comes through, it's going to be the Wild, Wild West, as you say. Because I don't think as soon as this passes, you're going to see eighty people coming out and saying, I have a five thousand square foot lot. Because you've got to meet the setbacks and things that just have to work right. So I don't know, you know, the state came in with this trying to create housing, and affordable housing. Because if you have a four-acre lot out in West Cumberland or off of Tuttle Road or anything like that, you're not, you're not building a twenty-four, forty ranch. Okay? If you had to spend eight hundred thousand dollars for a piece of property. So, you know, they're trying to create smaller lots with a little more affordable. Now, what is affordable? How big, Bob, you might know this, and because I know you guys went through it, how big are the lots out on the Blackstrap Road Development? The new lots out there that David Chase is doing? I mean, those houses are right next to each other. And those lots can't be much more than eight, nine thousand square feet, so.
Five thousand square foot lots.
Yeah. Well, you say it's a weird development, but, but I'm not, what I'm trying to say is, is just because you have five thousand square feet, that I can develop, I'm going to. If I have a house and I have five thousand square feet in front of it, I'm not going to throw a house right in front of my house and make things work. So I don't think it's going to be the Wild, Wild West come July second.
Well, but just, and I forget what they call that development, how they, but it's a, it's a one, it's a one lot. So those aren't all built on separate lots. So it allows for a much more dense.
Denser, so there's ways to get around that. I mean, I remember someone saying, the sewer came in to Cumberland because the Main Street house is off of Four Wheel Drive. All the steps were failing. They had to do something, you know, so the sewer came in. So, you know, I agree with what the builder here said, the planning board. Just because you have, okay, I have water and sewer, it's millions of dollars to extend a sewer line and get water and sewer and be able to develop a piece of property. So I don't think someone's going to also say, I'm going to build a six-story building in front of my house or in back of my house for apartments. So I don't know how this is going to shake out. I'd say good luck to the planning board and the town council. But, you know, I think the state's just trying to figure something out as we're eighty thousand units and trying to get affordable housing. My other statement was about ADUs, you keep talking about ADUs. And they're saying, well, this is a way to build kind of an affordable, use your piece of property to build an affordable piece of house, you know? But where you can't split that, what you're basically doing is putting another house on your property, but you can't split it. So you've taken, you know, we say, average housing in Cumberland's eight hundred thousand dollars, and now you've turned it into a one-point-four to one-point-five million-dollar house. Because I can't split the two. So if it's for my parents or my kids and all that, that's great. But once it goes out, how do we, how do you sell it? Well, now I have to buy two houses. I have to spend one, so you're not really, an ADU, I don't see it as affordable. If you can do it, great, for your parents or your kids or something like that. But is it really affordable housing? You know, that's just my comment. Good luck. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, unless there are any final comments, we'll take a brief ten-minute recess before our regularly scheduled seven PM meeting. Thank you so much, Christina, thank you, Ms. Mary Costigan, thank you, Steve, thank you, Peter, thank you, planning board, thank you, comp plan, thank you, public. Thank you all for being here today. All right. Take a quick recess.
All right, folks, I hate to make the peanut gallery stop chit-chatting, but we are going to get a wiggle on with our regularly scheduled programming. Thank you all for being here tonight. So, just to let you know, oh, well, first of all, today is Monday, August 25th. This is the Cumberland Town Council meeting. It is seven o'clock. We kicked off with a workshop at five o'clock with the planning board as well as with the comprehensive plan committee to review their new statute LD 1829, which relates to housing density. And kind of what our next steps are going to be as all of those different bodies to ensure compliance, as well as look at our zoning and make sure that we are keeping ourselves, you know, compliant with all of the laws that are coming from the state level. So, first up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the August 11th, 2025 meeting.
I'll give you a motion.
Great.
I'll give you a second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Okay, great. Item three is our manager's report. Mr. Sturgis, welcome back from vacation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. Good to see everybody this evening. Glad to be here. Glad to be back from vacation, to be honest. Love being back here. So, I'll be brief this evening because I know you've had an early start, but there are a few updates I'd like to provide. First of all, the Tuttle Road Bridge Replacement Project is about to begin. So, that'll be exciting. That is scheduled to begin shortly after Labor Day. And initial activities that you will see will be including clearing of brush and trees to the, I would say, the Yarmouth side of the bridge. So, you should anticipate that be taking place within the designated construction zone. As part of the project, a new traffic pattern will be coming up shortly. And that would be implementing a four-way stop at the intersection of Tuttle Road and Middle Road. With, as you've noticed in the past, it would say new traffic pattern ahead with the flashing beacons to have people understand that. And so, that's, they're looking to establish that. As soon as we know the deployment date for that, we'll share it as soon as we can. But that, you should see that as in the near term as the bigger movements. Word to the wise, the dump, the brush dump will be closed on Saturday. And that, just in observance of the holiday weekend, the town has traditionally closed on the Saturday before Labor Day. So, it's going to be closed this weekend as well. Regular hours and operations will start again on Monday. Another couple of words to the wise regarding traffic and busy streets in the town over the next few days. The Cumberland Soccer Club will be hosting their Just for Fun Tournament this weekend. And that'll be at the Tuttle Road, at Twinbrooks, sorry. So, that'll be Saturday, August 30th and Sunday, August 31st, roughly from about 8:00 a.m. till about 6:00 p.m. A reminder to all park visitors, dogs are prohibited on the Tuttle Road side of the park between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on both of those days. So, word to the wise on that. Just want to ensure the safety and enjoyment of all participants as well as spectators. And I know the out-of-town teams are also being notified of that. If you're over in the west side, at the fairgrounds, they're having their first Fairgrounds 5K Mile and Market Event. And that's going to be on Sunday, August 31st, starting at 9:30 a.m. and ending at roughly 2:00 p.m. And so, that'll be a 5K, and it's a, and a, and a one-mile and different events that they're going to have there. So, it's an inaugural event. As you may remember, they had their mass gathering permit issued this, earlier this summer. So, that's coming up now. The primary beneficiaries is the Maine Organic Farmers and Gardeners Association, as well as Maine 4H, Valor Youth Programs, and the local farms who are participating in the farmers market. That'll be held. So, and then there's also a reminder that Labor, Labor Day is Monday.
What?
Yeah, it's, it came awful quick this year. So, we will be closed at Town Hall on Monday, September 1st. I hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable holiday weekend. And then the last item I had was, if you recall, about, I think, two meetings ago, council had a discussion regarding, looking at the, amending the charter for the new council session to begin in, on, in July, at the first meeting in July. And just wanted to see if the council wanted us to move forward with that. If so, we, I've spoken and worked with Jen Doten, the, our town clerk. We have the window to be able to do that and get it done legally. If you'd like to add that as an item for, for a referendum with the voters in November. But we have a limited window. So, that would be, and I have some proposed language that could be teed up and ready to go for September 8th, where you would set a public hearing for September 22nd. And then if the council so chose to go forward with that, we meet the window that we need for, for voting within that. So, if the council would like us to do that, we're happy to bring that forward and, and do that. And, because I knew, I just wanted to follow up on that with the council. So, if you'd like, we can have that teed up.
That was your idea? That was your idea?
For two years running or longer.
What's the background? Why, why? Just so there's more time between new counselors and the next meeting? Or is it budget?
It's, it's really neither. It's, it's having an official start date. July 1st, in three years, your term will run three years. So, not an ambiguous date. It's, it's a fixed date.
Oh, got it. I'm in support.
And there's just a couple little edits. Really, that's all it takes to do that. But the charter amendment provisions are all laid out in state law. So, we've got that lined up. But really, it would make it so the councils would take, their, their term would take effect on the first, first meeting in July. And then they'd be sworn in at that point by the town clerk or authorized person to, to make that, make that happen. So, happy to bring that forward. You know, we'll have that ready for the September 8th. And if you look at it and decide that at that point you don't want to go forward, then that's great too. But we do have that two-meeting window in, or the council has that two-meeting window in September within which to make that happen. So, if it seems like there's consensus, we can make that happen. And otherwise, that's what I have, Madam Chair, for this evening.
Seems like there's some good consensus to have the discussion, for sure. So, let's do it. Excellent.
We'll tee it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Bob, thank you for, as always. Keep an eye on, yep, Andrew, sure.
Matt, just, can you just refresh my memory with the Tuttle Road Bridge? That's being built next to, right? And so, they're not shutting down completely Tuttle Road Bridge. Like, there might be, you know, traffic lights with one lane at certain times direction. But the majority of it is going to be, the bridge will still be open for most of the construction, right?
That's, that's the plan, Council McGoon, that they will have, yeah, the historical or the current bridge will be operational during that time period. And then, and then they'll just shift over when the new one's ready to go, and then they'll take the old one out. And they're also performing the same one up by exit, I think it's 53, or 15, sorry, 15 in Yarmouth on 295. There's a, there's two bridge, bridge projects that are going to be going on simultaneously. So, staff met with DOT last week to get an update on that. So, it should be interesting. And it's, it's a parallel type of conversation there, too.
Thank you very much and welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have public discussion. Public discussion is for comments and items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under New Business for Further Council Discussion. I think we've got someone here ready to chat. Go ahead.
I'm Michael Doyle. I live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I own and write for FamaToday.me. It's a website that had 10 million hits in three years and 54,000 new readers off a distribution list of 16 names. So, I'm always excited to have new content. I'm going to educate some of you folks here that are unfamiliar with the First Amendment. I've done a lot of research on this. Well, by the way, you guys owe the hospital $11,860 for keeping me in the emergency room for 23 hours. They billed me, but I was in custody, in custody of the Cumberland Police Department when this happened. So, someplace along the line, you guys have to fork over some money to Main Medical Center. Some of the things that you don't realize is that free speech in a political atmosphere is much more protected than on the street. And let's look at Conick v. Myers, 461 U.S. 138, 145, 1983. Supreme Court of the United States has frequently reaffirmed that speech on public issues occupies the highest rung on the hierarchy of First Amendment values, is entitled to special protection. Snyder v. Phelps, 562 U.S. 443, 458, 2011. Such speech cannot be restricted simply because it is upsetting. Texas v. Johnson, 491 U.S. 397, 414, 1989. It is a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment that the government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because society finds the idea itself offensive or disagreeable. New York Times Company, 376 U.S. at 270. Even less can it suppress expressions on the grounds that the expression is upsetting, offensive, or disagreeable to government officials, under the heading of respect. Sometimes it's better to be quiet and help people think you're stupid than to open your mouth and confirm it. Debates on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. And it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. Board of County Commissioners versus Umbra, 518 U.S. 668, 681, 1996. The court scotus long ago repudiated the doctrines of seditious libel in the favor of a theory of our constitution, which values free speech as essential to not subject to the vicissitudes of our political system. And the final thing that they commented on was the First Amendment forbids the government from abusing its arrest powers to retaliate against protected activity. That would be when I was arrested for publishing a sign on the public bulletin board, which was the fence around the school. Mr. Porter established that as a bulletin board. He allowed honk if you support the school board. That action produced a public bulletin board. And I took advantage of that under the 14th Amendment, equal protection of the law. And then I was arrested for that. And my sign was taken down 10 minutes after it went up. And the honk if you support the school board, that was up there for 10 days. So, these are things that will be litigated here shortly. You guys have hit off a big piece of, chunk of bad stuff for yourself. And you let Porter run wild with your money. Guess what? We're going to find out how big the price is going to be, but it's going to come. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up for public discussion? All right, then I'm going to close public discussion, and we are going to move on to legislation and policy. And as part of legislation and policy, there is an opportunity for public comment per Article 2, Section 7 of the Town Charter. There will be an opportunity for public comment on each item on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. So, we had 25-090 to hear a presentation from Don Parent on a city's in climate lobby resolve on reduction of CO2 emissions. Mr. Parent has a family matter that has come up. And so, if there would be a motion to table, I would take one. And we will, we will table that until he's able to join us.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. All right. Next up, 25-091 to consider an act on a mass gathering application for the Maine Principals Association Regional Cross Country Championship to be held at Twinbrook on October 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. I think this is a very, very annual event. What? I know. Andrew will love that it's all typed in.
Oh, my God.
I, I think it's, goes back to 1998. Is that right, this event? All the way back? People have been running around since Forrest Gump came out. And I believe all costs are reimbursed to the town, right? So, there's kind of no, no burden from us? Any, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on the, this wonderful event? Okay, all right. We'll close public comment on, you know, this wonderful cross-country event that's been happening since 1998. Any council discussion?
So, I, I do appreciate that it is typed, but I would like to see full, fully filled out applications, you know, on top of page two, just describe the three most recent outdoor performances of the group, performer, et cetera. Event being proposed. It's completely blank. Just think, you know, we asked that of everybody to, to do this. It would be great to, even if it's been going on for, you know, 20-plus years, to have that for the last three filled out, for this and any other application that we have.
I respect that. I respect it. Any other thoughts?
I'm in support of it, but definitely appreciate Andrew's feedback and just making sure that before these get to us, the applications are fully complete.
Matt, I assume that we have the certificate of insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they're, they're, yeah, we'll, we'll advise for next year, we'll just say, you know, you could put in the last, like, last year they held the regionals and the state, sorry, the, yeah, the regional and the state meet was here. And then the year before, it's every other year they do it. So, but we can have them populate the dates going forward. So, I think that was just one of those things, well, we've done it for forever type of thing. But I, we'll take, we'll take that under advisement and make sure that, you know, all the boxes checked. Happy, happy to do that. And then they, yeah, they're fully insured and they do take care of all the expenses as well. So, it's been a really good and successful partnership.
Awesome. I'd take a motion unless there's additional discussion.
I'll give you a motion.
I'm good. I'm not going to change anything that's happened since 1998.
This year I was born. I'm just kidding. I move to approve.
I thought you and I could enter the race.
I move to approve the mass gathering application for the Maine Principals Association Regional Cross Country Championship to be held at Twinbrooks on October 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Excellent.
You can tell I don't get out all day.
Okay. All right, next up, we have 25-092 to consider an act on purchasing the existing Phase 1 solar field on Drown, Drown Road, authorizing Revision Energy to move forward with Phase 2 solar field expansion and to purchase the Phase 2 solar field. I'd just like to mention that at our August 11th meeting, for anyone watching at home, we had a very, very, very robust presentation from our colleagues at Revision Energy, Mr. Guy Marshall, who is here with us tonight.
What a guy.
What a guy. Guy is a guy.
He's never heard that before in his life. You all should be ashamed of yourselves.
But if, if anyone does want to kind of re-familiarize, it was a really robust discussion that we had. And we asked the town manager, as well as our Ravishing Finance Director, Helene de Bartolomeo, as well as What a Guy Guy, to also look into the potential costing if we were to purchase the, the Phase 2 expansion, what that would look like from a financing perspective, what it would look like from a bonding perspective, as well as the renewable energy credits that could be generated. Guy, would you be willing to come up? Or Mr. Sturgis, would one of you want to just kind of give a high-level overview of your findings and any initial thoughts and can summarize it more beautifully than I ever could?
Madam Chair, you are entirely too kind, but I'd be happy to take a swing at that. So, so currently, the town has, has a, a solar field that we currently own next door. It generates 638,900 kilowatt-hours per year with an annual credit of about $129,185 that goes against many of the town's accounts. What we're looking to do on this is a two-pronged approach. One would be to purchase the existing solar field. Right now, that, that cost to do that is roughly, we're estimating about $680,000. And Mr. Marshall could correct me, but what we're looking at is, it depends upon the timing of that. So, each month, we pay a certain amount towards that. That offsets where we're at and offsets our purchase price. So, it depreciates or gets lowered each month. So, roughly, it was between a range of $670,000 and $700,000 is what the purchase price was. But that was when we estimated that back in, I think, May, right, Guy?
It's kind of like paying off your bank mortgage or your car.
Sorry, Guy, could you go to the mic, please? Thank you, sir.
It's like paying off your bank mortgage or a car. You have to, like, pick a date. Based on that date, we can tell you exactly what that's going to be. So, we project a date, for example, two weeks from now, we can nail that number down exactly.
So, that's why I chose the 680 number, because it was kind of in the middle ground from, from where we were looking at. But, but this, the original, the original solar field that we have has been very successful. And it's provided substantial savings on costs and demonstrates the value of the solar investment to the town with avoided costs we've had for years, and also provided cost certainty with what we have for power. What we're looking at now, in addition to that, is expanding the solar field with a new portion on the existing cap landfill that would produce roughly 460,000 kilowatt-hours per year with an estimated avoided electrical cost of about $95,000 annually. Now, one of the areas that we were looking at was the, the cost to build that was roughly about $1.2 million. However, we're in a special circumstances right now where the town can take advantage of the, of the current However, we're in a special circumstances right now where the town can take advantage of the, of the current, the current regime of the tax credits that are out there, which allows us a thirty percent write-down or tax credit that, that offsets that cost. And also, since, since the first one was purchased, or first one was put in, the rules have changed to allow towns also to take care of renewable energy credits. So we also would be eligible as the owner to have an annual renewable energy credit of about fifteen thousand dollars a year. That would come from that to generate revenue to the town. So that helps offset where we're at. Now, a couple of different areas that we were looking at was a cash purchase, which is what is one area that we're recommended to look at. That, that gives us a break-even point of about six years. And, and that's with, you know, with both projects involved there. There's, you know, the advantages to that obviously are no interest payments, faster return on investment, for one. We get to take care of the renewable energy credits, that's, that's built into that. But we have immediate full ownership and operational control. The other way we looked at it was bond financing. And we looked at that and said, okay, if you look, you know, we were looking at it the other night of five years at about four and a half percent, which seems like terms that are out there and available for, for towns right now. The estimated cost of that would be about nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. So it adds almost a hundred thousand dollars into the purchase price over that time period. The break-even point on that is, is it's a little over seven years, but we're rounding up and rounding down on that. Now, the advantages to that is that it preserves cash reserves and other strategic priorities, spreads the cost over time if we'd like to do that. However, you know, the disadvantages to that is that, you know, you're paying interest. So you have higher total cost due to interest. So roughly, it doubles the cost per kilowatt hour that we generate. So it's about, about ten cents per kilowatt hour if you finance it and about four and a half cents if you, if you outright purchase it. It also gives us a delayed full return on our investment by a year, year and a half, roughly. So, so we're looking at that. I also worked with our fantastic finance director, Helene Di Bartolomeo.
Not ravishing?
You can say that, Madam Chair, but I would have to report to HR if I was to. But I had, I spoke with Helene and she did some great work, as, as you saw with the memo that, that I had her look at as well. So she did an evaluation of our existing cash reserves and some of the areas that we have that we can find savings in or, or we have available to do this outright without having to, to bond. So she's, she's basically looked at some different area accounts that we have that, that are in the current budget, that we have cash reserves. They're not spoken for, so we're not sacrificing any other projects. So we can still do, and we're kind of coming up to the end window of, of our expenditure term, if you will, for the summer, because our paving's done, a lot of that, a lot of our large project work is funded and it's ready to go. So we can do this without penalizing ourselves or, or, I guess you could say kicking the can down the road on other projects that exist there. And we can pay ourselves back in the future. So that's, that's been, so she provided that information for the council to take a look at. The other thing is, we looked at some other, some items as far as, you know, we do have the renewable energy credits, so that's going to generate that fifteen K a year. Those funds can be used in many different ways. I know one question that Council Maholic had was cost for disposal cost in the future. And Mr. Marshall was great enough to provide me some estimated cost for that. It'd be roughly about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to dispose everything.
Wow.
So that's roughly what we're looking at for costs at that point in time. It's not, it's not substantial and that may get less in the future or, but if we have those credits over, you know, the next ten to twenty years, it more than offsets that. So you can set that aside on, if you wanted to, in an annual fund and fund it every year for the first, let's say, five years at, let's say, six thousand dollars per year and put that in an interest-bearing account and fund it. And then it'll offset inflation if there is, if that does sit in there. So there are a lot of different benefits that come to that. Let's see, also, the, the big thing is the town of Cumberland has sustainability goals and would like to have long-term energy independence. And I think if you get the chance to look at, or had the chance to look at the different, you know, the savings that are there, what they estimate the cost per kilowatt hour is going to increase to over the term, as well as the environmental benefits, you know, the project itself makes perfect sense. But also economically, it makes really good sense. I think at this point, if you have the funds to do it and then pay yourself over the next few years to offset that and you can, you can build that back up. And I think we're, you know, the work that Helene did to show that we can fund this and, and, and meet all of those goals, the high level as well as the low level financial goals, I think, I think that's, I think we're in a good position. And that's, that's why our recommendation is to, is to outright purchase it at this point in time and avoid having to take the time for bond financing and all that jazz. And I think we're in good shape to do it. And I don't know if Guy has, if I've missed anything. I tried to be comprehensive.
No, you've done a perfect job, actually. You know, and just to the point, you know, with a nonprofit, which the town would be, it would be a thirty percent tax rebate, not a credit, because obviously we're not a for-profit company. But it's an opportunity that is no longer going to exist, you know, after the end of this year. So it's a, it's a short window of opportunity. If you have the ability to pay cash, it also expedites the timing because we want to be able to safe harbor the tax rebate for you.
So before we go into council discussion and additional questions for Guy or for Matt, this is, if anyone would like to, from the public would like to comment on this, this is your time. Come on up. Just your name and where you live, sir.
Hello. Bill Follett, three seven one Main Street. Just kind of give some support to this. You know, solar energy is, is coming now as the cheapest form of energy that humans have ever created. So I think the town would be wise to go and advance this and take advantage of this. Again, to Guy's point here, the tax credits, the IRS is changing the world of tax credits. So the tax credits will expire at the end of this year. So if there is the opportunity to get that thirty percent credit, let's make sure we get it now. And then just as a point of reference, power prices in the United States are going to continue to increase and increase the rate faster than inflation. And that's partially due to expansion, continued expansion of load data centers for everybody's AI and phone, right? And then as we export more natural gas to other countries, right? The, you know, we're on a world, world commodity piece for natural gas. So our prices are going to continue to grow up, go up. And the majority of power in New England is generated by natural gas. So, you know, locking in a free source of power right now is, is a great idea if you can get it. So I encourage you to move forward and take advantage of this opportunity.
Thanks, Bill. Would anyone else like to?
Before the next speaker comes up, I think it's just important to note that Bill Follett is a on-the-ground engineer working in renewables. And he has an encyclopedia knowledge of where this is. And I'd much rather he came back up and shared a little bit more of generalities about where we are with energy today, because I think that'd be really eye-opening. And my conversations that have recently have ever certainly surprised me to understand that where we are today and where we could be with renewables is significant. And we are, we are vastly underestimating, underutilizing wind, solar, and water energy. Anyways, thank you, Bill.
Did you just give Bill some homework? I mean, we'll take it, Bill.
So I have plenty of time and that actually proves my point. I was actually going to say I'm not as intelligent as the previous speaker, Dave Noonan in Meadow Lane. But I, I wholeheartedly think we'd be foolish not to move forward with this, if I can be that blunt. I really appreciate last month when you guys actually kind of had this discussion and somebody brought up the option to actually purchase it, which I think-
That was Bailey Douglas, the chair of the Finance Committee.
Fair enough. There's a reason she's on the chair apparently, or the chair of the Finance Committee. But I wholeheartedly, completely agree with moving forward with this as a, as a Cumberland resident, so appreciate it. And I've had solar for about five years now and I look at it constantly and how much money it's saving me. I don't even know what an electric bill really is, except the connection fee. That keeps on going up, by the way, for, Christine is not here anymore, but the state legislature keeps on passing the ability to basically make the connection fee be more expensive. It started at thirteen dollars, now it's up to like thirty bucks. But other than that, I save a ton of money with solar.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, then we will, woof, we were, sorry. Oh, I'm going to have a little sip of water to reset. We will close public comment on that agenda item and open up to council discussion. More questions for Matt or for Guy or for Helene, or maybe for Bill. So thoughts, feelings? Andrew?
So I don't know if this is for you, Matt, or Helene, or Guy, but the credits, what, what are we looking at income-wise? It's like two hundred, two fifty, over the twenty-year. Of course, those credits, you know, additional income coming to the town, right? And that's free and clear, we can do whatever we want with that. That just goes straight into the general fund?
Yes. Long story short, yes, it's revenue. And town can do whatever it would like to do with that. If you'd like to earmark some of it or however you'd like to do it, but generally, it would be booked as revenue.
So that could very easily pay for, we could earmark some of that to pay for whatever upkeep and maintenance and more than cover that, it looks like.
Yeah, upkeep, maintenance, annual, I mean, it offsets our ownership costs by more than a hundred percent.
Couple, couple of things here. The, the mechanics of this, that excess power, everybody talks about, I want to put a heat pump in. I want to put a heat pump in. That's, that's a great, it's great. Where are you buying your power from? Are you offsetting that by solar or are you offsetting that from power coming in off the line? Is it, what else? Is it clean power or is it dirty power? And the conversation goes on and on and on. The fact with us is that with our excess power, now we have the ability to transition as we age out of some of our heating and cooling equipment to put in heat pumps that are, that are efficient, state-of-the-art today, tomorrow, five years down the road. So we're, we're, we're really positioning ourselves with the ability to make future purchases with our own power source. I'm not going to take credit for this one, but when I came onto council six, seven years ago and Bill Styles was the chair that year, we, you know, we talked, one of the things that we talked about and I, again, I'm not going to take credit for that because Mike was there and might remember who was on this. But we decided we were going to set money aside every year because it made sense to be able to pay this thing off. And now we're seeing the fruition of those labors and of careful financing, of prudent money management and anyways, I'm all for this.
I'd just like to echo what you said, Bob, of, you know, previous councils that took an otherwise, I would have guessed useless piece of land, cap landfill, that we can't really do anything, we can't build on, we can't turn into forests, we can't do much. And turning it into something that is going to allow the town to make its own energy and save, it was like four point nine roughly, if we purchased it outright, million over the course of, and that's just over the, the commercial lifespan. And that was defined as going down to, I think, eighty percent production. So even after that, we're still producing at eighty percent capacity. That's pretty good. And, you know, capability to save even more money going forward. So, you know, kudos to Bob, to Mike, to previous ones on the council that had the foresight to, to do that.
Does anyone, oh, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Helene, I don't know if this is for you, but should we, or Guy, this is towards you first. So just thinking about the operations of financing it, if we don't finance it and we purchase it outright, does our payment schedule remain the same? So I think we're initially due for a payment in November and then in January. So that would remain the same?
You mean, are you referring to buying out Phase One?
Yep.
So as soon as you buy Phase One, whatever date we set, at that point, you would then immediately take over the operating and maintenance costs?
I'm talking about the new solar, like, field. If we're purchasing that outright?
Yeah.
I think we had discussed last time we were here that there was a payment schedule. So you're paying, you know, fifty percent of what is owed in November and then the remaining balance gets paid in January. Would that remain the same if we're not financing it through you guys?
Correct. So basically, if you're a turnkey purchase, meaning you're going to pay cash whether you finance it or don't finance it, essentially, what we are doing for a lot of reasons, we're protecting ourselves against the tariff increases because this is an array that's not going to get built until probably late in two thousand twenty-six.
Yep.
We are pre-purchasing mods and inverters in advance, we're warehousing them. That's also helping us with the safe harbor provision, which means we have to start construction. And by purchasing those items, that counts as start of construction, which then safe harbors that thirty percent tax rebate.
Okay. And then another question, Matt and Helene. If we did bond this at the four, potential four percent, four point five percent interest rate, if we pay off early, is there an early payoff penalty? Or can we pay it off early or is that not an option on a bond?
Generally, on, on those five-year notes, there often is not a, a prepayment penalty. It's just a question, I mean, for them, it's, for the banks, they generally would love to get return of and return on their, on their cash that they've put out, but, but there generally is not a prepayment penalty on those five years. It's like, there's not a prepayment penalty on, if you finance your car for five years either, it's very similar terms.
Okay. And then are there any additional, like, similar to when you close on a mortgage? Are there closing costs associated with a bond or is it just?
There, there are, yeah, there are, Council Douglas, there'll be-
Do you have a sense of what?
Bond council fees would probably be about fifteen K.
Okay.
And then, you know, they might have a couple of origination fees, but really, the, it would come down to bond council. And then, and then they build into it, the, the bank, you know, we talked to probably TD Bank, Gorm Savings, Anderson Skoggin, local banks for that versus going out to the bond market, because it's just a five, like, it's just a five-year loan. It'd be like you would do on a lease purchase for a fire truck or anything along those lines, very similar type of concept. But, but yeah, there'd be, you'd still have bond council fees that you'd have to pay.
So looking at that situation, just like talking out loud, we'd be looking at fifteen K in hard costs plus labor hours for whoever is doing the paperwork. So call it twenty grand to close this plus interest. If we paid early, we'd save on interest. But so there is some benefit there if we want to hold on to cash. But Helene, do you feel like we're good, how do you feel about it?
The other item to consider, Council Douglas, is it's about a twelve point seven percent return on your, on your cash, which is better than what?
Four point five percent.
Yeah.
Got it.
Personally, after looking at what we're earning in interest on our, our investment accounts, it makes more sense to use the money and, towards the, the field and buy it outright rather than borrowing against it.
Yep.
Because we're, we would be spending more money to borrow than we would be saving money that we're just having sitting in a bank.
Okay.
That's an answer.
That's an answer. Thank you, Helene.
I will say, Helene talked me into it, the, the purchase side. She was like, you know, we're both pretty conservative when it comes to it. But it's like, okay, if you can spend five bucks to save ten, you do that.
It is a substantial saving, savings if you're looking at what, in theory, Guy, no shot to you. But if you're almost paying nine percent interest, when you really look at it, it doesn't make any sense for us to do that. So I think, to your point, the only two options are to either bond it or buy it outright, so.
Mike?
Guy, can you give an overview on what the yearly maintenance is on this?
It'll take me a couple, couple, but I can get there.
I'm going to give you a ballpark. It's roughly a couple of thousand dollars. And you're going to find, so the renewable energy credits are credits that we sell on your behalf. We go through a third-party, you know, sale. Usually, it's called Knollwood. It's a company, a family-owned company that we've worked for years and years. And essentially, you get a quarterly check for, and it's based on your production. And it's twenty dollars per kilowatt. And so if you do the math, the renewable energy credits are more than going to pay for the operating and maintenance costs. The other thing is that in our modeling, in the cash flow, we've been really conservative and we have dropped off renewable energy credits at year ten only because we felt we couldn't go out too far on the end of the diving board trying to guess what that market- too far on the end of the diving board trying to guess what that market is. Renewable energy credits are, are traded like a stock, and their value, you know, has to do with, you know, compliance with EPA or various items, so they can go up and down to some extent. The last four or five years, they've been actually quite stable, and we've used that in our modeling. But again, if you look at the twenty-five and thirty-year savings, we've stopped the renewable energy credit income at year ten. The reality is, they may go on and on and on, but we didn't dare, you know, forecast that into our modeling, and we always try to be a little bit more conservative in our modeling. I mean, to Matt's point, too, that the second array that we're going to do is a kilowatt hour credit system. So for every kilowatt hour we produce, we're going to get a credit. Well, we expect, you know, CMP rates in particular, as versant well as well, to go up somewhere between four and six percent, and that may continue, and if you consider the compounding factor of that, and at this point, you know, with your kilowatt hour credits, if the credit, if the rate goes up, the, the array becomes even more valuable, because that's the cost that you would be offsetting in the future.
One more question, may I?
Go for it, please.
Um, maybe if you were Matt, are these, are these facilities or structures, are they insured? Do we insure them, do they fall under our umbrella policy, or?
They would, it's not, it's not a, a large impact, but they would fall under the town's insurance policy. But it's a, but speaking with them, speaking with our insurance company, it's not a, it's not a high dollar, I guess you could say, not a high dollar add-on, so, less than say a, a fire truck would be, or anything along those lines, unfortunately. And, and the cost for annual maintenance is roughly twenty-nine hundred dollars for this one, so you could probably double that for the two of them, about six thousand dollars a year for the operating and maintenance contracts.
Great. Thank you to both of you, and, uh,
Thanks, Mike.
And I'm in favor of this, I'm a favorite when Bob and I did this years ago, to get to this point. I don't see a downside to this.
I just have one question about the renewable energy credits, so, wha- what is the kind of the governing body that, I mean, we mentioned before, the IRS with the tax, or the, the credit, the, not the tax break?
And, and the Treasury Department.
So, policies can change, so, I am-
As we know.
And I think clearly, you know, you've said, we're not going to plan for this ten years out, but it's also not without, outside the realm of possibility that the credit program could go away at some point?
I gotta be honest with you, and it, it could, it's like any stock that you might buy, it may be worth a hundred dollars today and five dollars tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, we can only go based on historic evidence, and we've used that in our modeling. Could it change in the future? Absolutely it could, and you're vulnerable to that, but, I, you know, my perspective, I look at it as it's sort of a bonus, like, we didn't know about the renewable energy credits. We're going to take it as long as we can, disappears, it's okay, we never thought we were going to get it in the first place. But the numbers, you know, and I think you're wise, in that it's just like, whether you buy or lease a car, it's always going to be better if you can purchase it, because you're going to, you're going to make better money on your money.
So, maybe Matt and Helene, from your perspective, obviously know it as a crystal ball, as far as the credits go, but, that wouldn't be something that would be prohibitive of us moving forward with this, like, it's fifteen K is really nice income to have on a yearly basis, but I think with the money, we're still paying ourselves back, but that, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, I, Madam Chair, I think I can jump in on this. The, the rec, or the renewable energy credits are, are a nice buy-catch product. It's kind of like fishing, you're going out for haddock, but you end up catching some pollock. It's great, because there's a market for pollock, but you weren't really fishing for it. In this case, the recs are kind of a nice buy-catch product that, that, that we get from this. The big, let's say, the, the bluefin tuna on this is the, to stay with the fish metaphor, is the avoided cost and the town's savings and cost certainty that you're going to have over the next forty years, that, you know, you know, it's like, you know, four-plus million dollars just on, just on the expansion alone. So that's, that's the, that's the big prize there, the recs are nice to have, and they can help us with our carrying costs, and for as long as they exist, and if they, if that changes, well, administrations change, too, so tax policies change, things like that. So, you never know, like Guy said, it's here today, could be gone tomorrow, but at least while we have it, let's take advantage of it. But, yeah, it's not a deal breaker by any stretch of the imagination, it's really the, it's really that four, you know, little over four cents a kilowatt hour that the town's going to be touching down with.
Not a massive amount of money, but just thought it would be worth not banking on it, right?
I think one other thing that was brought up last time, and I forget who said it, but was concerned about taxpayer impact of like this, and I think it would be helpful for you to explain to everyone at home and on the council, like, how this wouldn't necessarily be impacting the taxpayer, or is it impacting the tax, you know, the taxpayer? If you could just talk that through.
Sure, it, it does not at the, at the present time, because it's existing reserves that sit there, so it's not, it's not, it's not taxes that need to be raised to, to pay for this liability. So in that case, it doesn't impact the taxpayers, it does affect our, our, our reserves for a little bit of time, but we pay ourselves back, we pay ourselves back, I mean, to be honest, I think it's to the taxpayers' benefit for the long-term costs of that, that you're not going to have that four-plus percent annual escalating cost. It would have been without this as a, as an asset, so, in a sense, it's, you're doing the taxpayers' benefit by using the funds that they've already paid to pay for them for the next thirty years. So it's kind of like you're, you're funding your future with that, from your savings that you've already, that you've set aside, and are, are ready, and give you the, give you the ability to do that. It's kind of like, you know, that four-twenty-nine plan that you've set aside, and Council Bill talked about, you know, setting aside money for the last six years, seven years, to, to purchase this outright, you know, phase one outright. So now it's kind of like taking advantage of that, and, hey, we can, we can subsidize that education with the thirty percent savings and, you know, and more. So, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good there that will benefit the taxpayers in the long run as well, with, you know, with the cumulative savings, as well as that cost certainty.
Jeff and then Denise.
Just a quick question, follow on about reserves. Historically, what have reserves been used for?
Capital projects are the primary driver where you can do that.
And we have our projects mapped out already, yeah.
Yes.
Others in the budget, and those have already had, or they will have funds allocated toward those specific projects.
Yeah, yeah, Council Thorson to your question, it's, you know, remember during, if you go back through the mists of time, this, the twelve weeks we spent together in the spring, looking at the capital, at the CIP plan, we have that mapped out really well, and the work that Helene's done really has that set up. So as far as funding it and what the town's, you know, future liabilities to fund those are, and when, but as we have planned for, you know, reserves for replacements, repairs, things along those lines that are there, so those are mapped out pretty well. But you could use that, and the, you know, you could use those reserves to help offset those expenses, but, and we will, and, but we'll, we've got, I think we've got a good opportunity to, you know, when you do have that, that's kind of the reason why you can take advantage of it, whereas other towns might not have those, that reserve capacity that they can do. But it's not, it's not negatively impacting us in the short term, and on the long-term benefit is, is so great that I think that it'll only, it'll positively impact that in the long haul.
So, I just got a couple of things. You know, there's probably always a guy that appears like the negative one, and that's going to be me tonight. But I'm doing it really out of, you know, we're going to spend a million dollars, and it's a lot of money. So, you know, I want to make sure I do my homework and think things through, so it comes out an effort of that. And, you know, I understand we have sustainability goals, and, you know, I think that's great, you know, we made, you know, the citizens want to have sustainability, you know, we got to, we got to support that as a council. So, that makes sense to me, you know, the expansion makes sense to me. There's some stuff I doubt that we've heard, I'm not an expert on solar. I've done, I spent this weekend and six hours on a plane doing a whole bunch of research, because I had nothing better to do on Friday. But, you know, I guess it comes down to really risk versus reward in my, in my head, and, you know, one of the first question I really have is natural disaster, where does our insurance policy leave us with that? You know, hurricane, or, you know, severe ice storm, or hailstorm? Because if we own this thing, and, you know, it's classified as act of God, and we're on our own, it's, we're not going to be in a good spot. So that's, that's my first question, if anyone knows the answer.
I can't say that, I, I know the act of God clause on it, I know for just about everything else, we'll be insured, insured for it, but as far as, yeah, like, the, I'd, I'd have to circle back on that one, Council, to be honest.
And I guess, you know, I'm a, I'm a business guy, and, you know, I map stuff out of sell price over cost, pretty, pretty simple. On an annual basis, you know, simple business model, what are we looking at a year for, for revenue when you, when you subtract all that stuff?
Oh, sure. If I could have just a quick moment. As far as, now, look, you're basically looking at about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Is what, is kind of what we're looking at for annual, you know, I guess you could say avoided cost.
Okay.
So it'd be, you know, it's, it's a positive to offset our negative, so to speak, so, but that's two hundred and thirty thousand, plus the, if you add the rec, the renewable energy credits into that, it puts it around two hundred and forty-four, two hundred and forty-five thousand cumulative.
And of that two hundred and thirty annual, we're still already offsetting our electrical charges in the town building, correct? That's over and above that, right?
We are, yeah, that's, that's cute, that's for both.
Okay.
That'd be the hundred and twenty-nine that we're saving was with, with number one, and then the additional ninety-five plus the fifteen.
So I guess my last two questions really probably need to go to revision, and, you know, the first one is just from a risk standpoint. You know, I, the numbers make sense, but just, there's probably some people out there wondering, is there a way we can do this without the town of Cumberland owning this? Expand the field, and basically eliminate the rest, the maintenance, the disposal, all that, or is it, or is this the only way?
Yeah, I mean, the only other way is to do it through the power purchase agreement that we first proposed, at sixteen point four cents a kilowatt hour.
Okay.
And if you look at the, you know, twenty-five, thirty-year savings going with that method versus the other method, I mean, that's a choice that you guys have to make.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, and sorry to put you on the hot seat, but when you were here last time, you know, we talked about investor financing, and that was modeled into the price you gave us.
Yeah.
Now we're coming to you in a net cash deal, you know, by us doing that for you, you can use your investor financing on another project. So, you know, I guess, and this is just the sales manager in me, can you sharpen your pencil a little bit more?
Well, so, so here's the thing, and I was prepared for this.
Yeah.
You got to remember-
I love this.
That the price that I quoted you was the price to our investor. And this particular investor has given us ten million dollars to invest in various projects, so he's already, he, she, is getting a very heavy discount with this array, so, by you purchasing the array, or the investor purchasing the array, so that's essentially what the investor's doing, you're getting the same price as an investor who's, you know, investing ten million dollars in revision energy.
But you get to do another project, there's got to be another ten grand in there.
We do get to do another, there's a very long queue behind you if you don't want the power purchase agreement. We're, we're down to four million dollars left, and it's all been promised. And, and I know you're talking about opportunity costs, but, I don't know.
We still need a pound sand.
Yep.
I think he's, what he's saying is he already gave us the volume discount.
That is basically what I'm saying.
I'm familiar.
I admire your, you know,
Get in there, Joe.
Business sense. I get beat up all day long, Guy, I don't quit.
No, 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 I don't take it personally.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, I want to just take one more moment to, to thank Council Vale, I know he doesn't like to get any accolades, but he, he was on, he was on me for the, about the second month I was on, in this job. We got to get that done, Matt, what are you talking to Guy, so, Council Vale needs, uh, needs a credit for being an instigator and a, kind of gas pedal, so.
Bob, we're so proud of you, genuinely, this is amazing.
It's really great that we're here, if we weren't, especially with everything with the timing. Great job.
You did it, Bob, you did it.
Kill her.
Kill who?
That's usually when you say-
It's awesome, it's killer.
Thank you.
You're a gamer, you're supposed to know the cool language.
I don't yell kill her, that's crazy.
Like, killer, like, so cool.
I know, I get it.
All right, all right. It seems like there may be possibly some consensus that's developing, um, oh, Denise, get in here, please.
I mean, I'll just give the two cents, it's not really relevant now, well, it kind of is. I was pretty, I don't know what the word is, I can't think of the word, averse, to be buying outright today, because I was just worried about, you know, maybe we need to keep Stefan reserves or whatever, but Helene tipped it in favor, like, I, Helene is like the finance expert, and I put a lot of stock in her recommendations, so, yeah, I'm good. That's all.
I would give you a motion.
Uh, so, sorry, really quick, just based on the motion content, we'll maybe give your motion first, but, do we have to delineate between the bond versus the purchase outright in the language?
My motion would be for the purchase outright.
So, okay, so based on the current, okay, cool, just on the current language, okay, awesome sauce, thank you.
Unless there's-
I just wanted to procedurally triple-check.
I move to approve the purchase of the existing phase-one solar field on Drown Road, authorizing revision energy to move forward with phase-two solar field expansion and the purchase of phase-two solar field.
Bob. All right, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, oh, this is great, this is something we can feel-
Congratulations, Bob, and thank you, Guy.
Congratulations, Bob!
What a guy.
No, I, I honestly appreciate all your questions, you guys have been great to work with, it's kind of, I'm kind of miss you.
I'm going to miss you too, Guy, you should come to my house.
Don't worry, Guy, we're going to have you back in here about the goats.
Oh, we, we do have sheep.
Yeah, the sheep leasing.
I'm not sure how they're going to work out with the capped-off landfill, whether, how long they'll live, though. Maybe goats are a little hardier.
I mean, the food pantry can-
The problem is goats chew the wires and sheep don't.
I'm here for the sheep.
You're smart enough to know to stay away from that high voltage.
Thank you so much, Guy, we're really looking forward to this.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, party people, next up is new business, Councilor Maholic, what you got for us?
Can I go last, I'm trying to formulate some thoughts.
I thought you were just on an airplane thinking for six hours.
I was think, I was learning about solar.
All right, all right. Vice Chair Eads.
Uh, a couple of things, last meeting I brought up, talked about, I was discussing reappointments and so on, but I really, Brenda, straightened that out, a lot of help, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Brenda, that was a big. I sent an email to everybody tonight that a homeowner here in Cumberland has sent to me, and I don't know if it's something that we want to discuss. Basically, the gist of it is, is a, is a home in the small, in Crossing Brook, and it's being rented out, and there's a two-year limit on the rental, according to ordinance within the, the zone. And, right now, there's a mother and two children that are renting the property, and they've, it's coming up on two years, in which we, the town, have said, according to the ordinance, you've got to go. So, I had, I had a discussion with a couple of councils tonight prior to the meeting. I really don't know where I am at this point, because I really don't have enough information. I don't know if it's, if, I guess I'm asking, how do you guys feel about rentals in, in these places like Crossing Brook? How do you feel about a two-year limit? I mean, this mother and children would never be able to afford a home in Cumberland, but they're, they're living here, they're, she's raising her two children alone, she's being subsidized by the state. But I don't really think that's the important part, but she's able to live out here. At the same time, is that what we want for our, for our homes? I, I, I really don't know, and I am wide open to any discussion on it, I, I've just- I've just been to everybody's thoughts. I mean, the only way that basically, uh, we come to an agreement with her to allow her, or, um, um, we change, we change the ordinance. I don't know. But this, this was brought to me, and I said I'd bring it up to the council and, and see where everybody's at. I know some of us have rental property, and it's good to have that property while Bill's equity, but we're allowed, we, we allow people to stay in these properties that we own. While they can get up on their feet or they can afford, that's what they can afford is the rent, not, not the ownership. So I throw it out, I throw it out to my fellow councillors, what, what do you guys?
I need some clarification real quick on the zoning here, because I'm trying to read through this really long email chain to understand the background on this. So you can't rent out there, is that what you're saying? Or there's a limit on how long you can rent?
If I'm wrong, Matt, and I'll, I'll, he's the expert on this, it just came to me.
Okay.
Uh, Denise, but there's a two-year limit, one time, two-year limit.
Uh-huh.
So you can't rent it for two, then turn around and rent it to somebody else for two, rent it out for a year after that, so one time, two year, and it, and this was pushed by our, it was pushed by our previous manager who lived in the neighborhood, but supposedly he got complaints, um, of this house being, or places, people coming in and renting the places instead of living there, so.
And these are considered like affordable rental rates? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Go ahead.
If, if it'd be helpful to the council, it's a contract zone agreement for Crossing Brook that was done, and that was part of the contract zone. Um, there's also, uh, a couple other contract zones within the town that have similar restrictions that are on them. But I think it might be best if we have, uh, Mr. Longley and can sit down with the council, probably do an exec session next month, because it may be an enforcement action, and you don't wanna, uh, I guess I would say you don't want to trample on anybody's rights to due process. So I think it might be good to have Bill come in for exec session, talk with the council, and kind of bring you up to speed as to what it, if or what the town council would like the, for enforcement to take place, might be the easiest way.
And I, I certainly don't want us to put our fingers in the enforcement on this, Matt, I just think there's an overall philosophy of, what is our overall philosophy? And I, I, I don't want, I, I trust you and Bill with my life, you guys do a great job, um, but in this, this, it's just an overall philosophy, do we want restrictions on renting? When people come in and, and she is renting, in this case, renting below, but I, I've tried, I'm try, really trying to stay away from the, this individual case, but more of the philosophy of, do we want to prevent people from buying a house and, and renting it? I, I don't know.
It just, it, yeah, I think it may be just a good opportunity to, to probably take a look at, you know, I guess I would say from the enforcement side of it, if, if there was, let's say, either, you know, enforcement action that the town needed to take, we talk to the council first regardless, before you, let's say, before you went over that bridge. And that would be, you know, issuing somebody a violation order, things along those lines that you'd have to enforce as far as part of the contracts, because the town has to enforce a contract zone agreement. But again, that's why I think it'd be best if, if, you know, if Bill had the chance to sit down with the council and kind of lay out the particulars, and then you could look at the, the general as, like the high level as well, and have that conversation, that we have time to digest, uh, as much information as we can get, uh, together, so the council can see the full picture, because like you said, council reads, you know, you get a fifteen minutes before you come into a council meeting, that's awful hard to, to reconcile quickly, so. But it gives us, gives us a couple weeks to get all the, everything pulled together, and I can get, and, and Bill's, you know, Bill's non-denominational when it comes to it, he's, you know, yeah, I, I guess that'd be my recommendation, is, you know, bring the council, you know, maybe have an exec session before, before the meeting, so the council can come up to speed quick on that for about half an hour to an hour, may be the best, best way, and then after that you can decide what direction to.
Recommendation well received, Matt, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, Bob.
Mike, I didn't see the e-mail, and I typically don't see emails that are sent Monday afternoon, because when I get home, I'm late, and I don't have the time to, to read my emails, I'm just prepared for the council, and hopefully I get all the materials before, you know, Monday. But I think the appropriate, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get up to speed here in a hurry on what, what you're talking about, and, and the general questions, too. I think the appropriate avenue was for us to have a workshop with some general thoughts about the general, the idea of, or do we, do we want rentals in the town, how do we enforce them, and, and then, you know, maybe a specific example of what the effects of any legislation that might come out of that. But I think, I think a workshop is the appropriate venue.
Agreed.
I think executive session is good for this, since this is largely born from a specific case, that is probably a little confidential. Like, and I think we would probably be talking about that at the same time, probably, so I think executive session's probably appropriate. Additionally, if this development itself, contract zone agreement had different rules and some other thing, I don't know if, are there other places in town where you can't rent out your house if you feel like it, or is this specific to Crossing Brook?
Yeah, there are three different, uh, three different neighborhoods that were under contract zone agreement, uh, that were there, and I will say it's not the only rental of which we've become aware of, and, uh, you know, have to have the town's attorney advise as to, you know, what they're, so we may have, uh, like, specific, and then a couple of general parts of that conversation as far as what the council, you know, as far as direction, and, and the council has the ability to do that under exec session, because it's, uh, under, uh, a potential legal action.
Right.
Is where, uh, is where you want to be there, so that way, in case, you know, you say it's, you know, one, two, three, Fifth Street, and people can go in and Google that and find out who's, who's there, this way maintains their, their confidentiality and privacy, and just want to ma- maintain that, because if nothing takes place, then it's a no harm, no foul, but if something does take place, then you don't want them to say that they were denied due process, that's the biggest part of it all.
Yeah, I think if you're, this is what you're poking at, we can do our executive session, talk about kind of the specifics, we can get the lay of the land, um, from Bill Longley as well, and then we can have after that, an additional workshop if there's kind of the appetite there. I know that there's some stuff in, I was reading about affordable housing in, um, uh, Colorado, which has a lot of similar challenges, uh, to us with, um, you know, ski, skiing communities and not being able to get workforce housing, and they've done some interesting things with deed restrictions on Airbnb properties, so that if you kind of sign a contract and you say you're not gonna rent out, you know, you may get a break on your taxes, right? So I think it could be an interesting workshop to have, and then have this larger conversation after we get through the data and information that should be anonymized, right, and then talking to how that comes in with our larger vision. Does that sound okay with everybody?
No, I, I like it, let's do it.
Sweet.
Let's do it.
Um, back to Mike.
I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Did a great job, okay, councillor McGoon.
Uh, I just have, uh, reminded that the LCC's next meeting is, uh, September third, so it's not this coming Wednesday, but next week's Wednesday, uh, right here in the chambers at seven o'clock.
Okay, councillor Douglas.
Um, first, first and foremost, shout out to the folks over at Mabel I Wilson, Brooke slash Tig and I, both had our kiddos over there for the kindergarten orientation today, and it was lovely. Um, the next finance committee meeting will be on September eighth, um, and the next library committee meeting will be on September seventeenth. It's all from me.
Excellent. Councillor Vale.
Couple things. We made, I believe, a major hurdle today, major milestone, uh, and it was, it was visionary, not by me, but by previous councils, previous work by other people, to get a solar farm and then to get us where we are today. So, uh, visions don't come overnight, and, and most of them require hard work, and somebody once said, if you're gonna set goals, don't set goals that you can complete in your own lifetime, because you're not thinking large enough, think of goals that extend beyond there. So, uh, I, I may be thinking about a goal that is beyond my lifetime, but I'm gonna go back to it. Last year, I made it, I, an approach to talk about a, a, a study of the Drown Road, I'm sorry, the Styles Way property, and to do an analysis of that about what it would take to put workforce housing down there, and frankly, I've heard about it from people recently about, what, what are we doing, what are we doing, what, what's the plan? And so, uh, a plan doesn't happen, a project doesn't happen without, uh, some planning. So I guess what I'm looking for, uh, not tonight, because I want everybody to think about this, I'm looking for us to take a vote next meeting to up or down whether we want to do some analysis of what a project would look like down on Styles Way. And, uh, my proposal at the time last year, and we did a little bit of work on it, and Andrew was involved that a little bit, was uh, eight to ten buildings of ten units each of, uh, singles, doubles, and triple bedrooms, and, uh, I think we can eliminate the train station, because it, it's, may not be worthy of our time now, not that it isn't, uh, in the future. So I, I think that, you know, uh, I would like to see us do the analysis to see if there is a project available, whether we have, and I think we have the people, uh, we have, we have people in town who have the expertise, we have, certainly we have salesmen in the building trades, uh, that I deal with, uh, there are other people, there's Landry in French, one of the principals that lives in town, uh, people like that that we can have on the committee, we had a, a housing task force committee, and most of those people have the expertise to sit down and study the issue and, and come back to us with a, with a, uh, a, a report. And then if there is something positive out of that, then perhaps we can go to a planning phase, but, for a project. But until we do an analysis of, of the property, um, we can't do anything, so I, I'm gonna ask you all to, over the next couple of weeks, if you've got questions, reach out to me, or, or if Matt can propose a, a, a question that the council can answer, I think that's, uh, I'd like to see that happen. Taking that one step further, we have a facility up on Drown Road, uh, senior housing project, and I've mentioned this to Matt a number of times, I said, I'd like to see what it would look like to convert part of that into, uh, congregate housing, elderly housing, end-of-life care, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and Matt frankly said, yeah, you give me four votes and I'll go down and talk to him. All right, so I, I appreciate that, and so, uh, you know, we don't get anyplace until we have a conversation. You know, I roll the thing around in my head, and I said, you know, what if we funded a nurse for that facility? You know, what's, what's cheaper, calling, calling the ambulance or having, having a sitting nurse? Or do we need one today, or do we need one five years from now? But the, the folks in that, in that facility aren't getting their younger, and most of them live there because they don't have a lot of options, so part of what we do as a community is, is we're responsible for all our citizens, and we say, well, what can we do? Uh, so, again, this is, this is a plan that, uh, is a conversation, and I think it's a step that we can take. It's, it doesn't cost us anything to have a conversation, but it does take four of us to direct the town manager to go do something, so. Uh, there's two things that I have. Uh, and then finally, one last thing. When I was chairman, I initiated a conversation between the school board and North Yarmouth that we met weekly. So, um, I'm hoping that Tig and Mike, with those conversations, are also challenging the school board and our friends in North Yarmouth, and the challenge that I'd ask you to give them is, the last time we met, council, school board, North Yarmouth Select Board, it was mentioned about consolidation of efforts between communities. That consolidation of efforts doesn't stop with the communities, it also involves the school. And I don't want to sit down with them the next time and say, have you had a conversation with Falmouth and Yarmouth and the surrounding schools about how you might share services? So my, my charge, my challenge to you is to make sure that they're, they're hearing the concerns, because at tax season next year, we're gonna hear about it. That's all I got.
Um, just to action on your two questions, so are you suggesting that at the next meeting, you'd like to have a discussion about both a nurse, and you'd also like to have a discussion?
That was a general, just a general statement.
No, but obviously if you wa- want us to be bringing those up, you said the next meeting, so, or is that what you'd like to see?
I would like to have the town manager reach out to the ownership over there and say, is there a way for us to be involved with future planning? Is there a way that, you know, do you want to sell the facility? Uh, we would like to have three beds, four beds, something like that. I, I think the conversation's wide open, but I'm, and I guess I would like some, some input from the rest of us, that, what are some of the ideas that might, we might give to Matt to, to say, this is what the council's thinking. This is certainly not my singular idea, it's, it's, uh-
For Styles Way? Uh, Styles Way?
For both.
Okay, um, would it be more, would, would it be a meta, everyone, okay, maybe with a workshop versus a specific agenda item? Would that be a more appropriate? Do you have any issues with doing it in a workshop setting?
No, uh, no, I don't, I, I'm just looking for a general consensus to-
And you don't want it now?
No, I think it's inappropriate, I think we should have some time to think about it, I think that with the end of the meeting, and I, a workshop's fine.
Okay, great, I, I would love to have a workshop on it, I would also like some time to think and digest, and we also, um, do have, uh, some survey data that's out there, and also we, you know, we approved TIF one, right? And so the extension of TIF one, so that's a new tool that we have in our tool belt to think about, as well as when it comes to the numbers, right? Um, so I would be, if there's some council consensus, at least to have a workshop to throw around some ideas, is that?
Yeah.
All right, I think we've got some consensus, Mr. Manager.
That's, that's a step. I'll take that.
Okay, cool, cool beans. Um, councillor Thorson.
Uh, no, I have nothing.
Pass. Councillor Maholic, did you have enough time to collect your thoughts, young man?
I did, I did.
It sounded like a fallen essay written over there.
I did. My mouth, there's more scribbles off and crosses than anything written, but, uh, twenty dollars for the food pantry. And just, uh, following up on Bob's comments earlier about, you know, term dates and start dates, you know, we, this spring, we had a challenge to have a candidate's night, night in the election, and I just got thinking about it when Bob said that, and said, why don't we put that on the calendar now? We know when the June election's gonna be, and if we don't need to have one, then it's easy enough to cancel, but if we start putting the stuff on the calendar now, it's there, because last time, I think we came up against Memorial Day weekend, and I know I was out of town, Mike, and you were out of town on that date, and, um, just, just an idea, so.
Good idea.
Next one was, I know, um, a couple meetings ago, I was challenged about a meeting in West Cumberland, and for the citizens of West Cumberland, I haven't forgotten about you, I, I'm willing to meet with you, just gotta figure out some time to get that on the calendar. And I guess the next thing might be a little bit more controversial, but, you know, the solar purchase was a unique, unique purchase. Um, you know, we're already tied into, you know, revision energy because of the current contract, but, you know, I just, personally, I'd like to bid something like that, you know, we were up against the wall, we had to move forward, it's a unique situation, but I just think, you know, purchase that large, competitive bid process probably warranted, um, but this time, we had to do it, we didn't have a choice, so. And then lastly, I guess just in closing, you know, I think at times we all may come in here with different thoughts on agenda items. Um, but I just, I really think at the end of the day, you know, all of us are really doing this for the, for the good of the citizens, and you know, it's just, want everyone to keep that in mind, so, that's all I got.
Awesome. Um, the only thing I had was, um, we, if also there's some consensus around doing this, I think Denise sort of touched on it, um, earlier tonight, and Jeff had brought this, uh, to the attention, we, Matt and I talked a little bit about it, but um, even though we did talk about all of our capital budget, or capital, um, projects that are coming down the line, um, it might be good to do either a presentation or a workshop, just so we know, um, what we have, uh, coming down the long line, long-term, especially as, um, with some of the comp plan results, you know, people really want to see Greeley, some stuff down on Greeley Road, you know, where does Bruce Hill water come in? It would be good, I, I feel like I would love to know where these things fall in, just from a scheduling perspective, do we have resources allocated, what's the timeline? So if any, at any time in the next couple of months, you and Chris and, um, Helene and all of the awesome people on your team would be able to give us kind of a high-level lay of the land as to what CIP stuff is coming up, that would be great.
Sure.
And maybe more of like a project manage, like project management and budget, right, not just, right.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so many different ways we can take care of Greeley Road, and I mean, water main, you gotta do it, but there's different ways you- there's different ways you can do that, too, especially when you run into ledge to, you know, minimize costs, so, it's a lot of stuff to look at.
There's gonna be our project engineer over here.
Know how to move dirt.
Great, uh, and if there's nothing else, I'd take a motion to adjourn?
I'll give you a motion.
Second.
Give that to, uh, Councilor Vail tonight, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Happy Monday, everybody.